The topic of the study session is review of the proposed budget and master fee schedule for the fiscal year 2122. Since this is a public meeting, we will be conducting today's study session in a virtual setting using Zoom. Council members and staff are participating for remote locations to practice appropriate social distancing. Members of the public may view and listen to the study session as noted on the agenda. So with that, we'll jump right into it. Our proposed budget and master fee schedule for fiscal year 2122 will be presented by our finance director, Jan Cook. So Jan, let me just turn the floor over to you. Actually, let me back up for a minute. Lisa, do we need to take role of the council members or not?
You know, this is a study session, Mayor, but I'd be happy to just note for the record that all council members are present.
Could you, could you, I'd just like the record to show that everybody was present. So if you could.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor Royce and city council members. I'm pleased to present the fiscal year 2122 proposed budget and fees and charges. Next slide, please. This is our agenda for today. We'll go through three sections. First will be an executive summary of the budget, then we'll go into some more proposed budget details, and then we'll go through the proposed fees and charges. And what the requested action for today is, is to get city council feedback to staff so that when we present the final budget in June for budget adoption, and when the master fee schedule is presented, that we've incorporated any feedback that you have. And this budget was reviewed with the financial advisory committee, and they are recommending the budget as presented today. Next slide, please. So for the, for the presentation, I'll be doing part of it, and then Anne Ritzner will be doing part of it, and Rich Santiago as well. But I would also like to thank all of the department heads and the management staff, as they have put together a great budget for your review today. So, and thank you, city council members for the goal setting session, which helped to really set the budget, and also with the financial advisory for their detailed review as well. So first, to give some context for next year, we thought it would be important to look at some of the trends that occurred this year, and also what is trending for next year for context. And so basically, the town of Hillsborough is a triple A rated city and continues to be well positioned despite the COVID-19 and the economic impacts. Hillsborough is not dependent on, hello? Hillsborough is not dependent on sales and TOT tax like some of the other cities. And so we have not seen as many of the revenue impacts that other cities have seen, including some of our neighboring cities. We do expect this current year's revenues, net revenues, to be better than what we adopted in the budget, and they will exceed the adopted budget for this year. So that's really good news. And also, our reserves are intact and maintained at policy level. Next slide, please. So some of the positive revenue trends that we saw this year included a quick, short recovery of permitting and investment income. These were some of the areas that, at the end of last year, were a question mark given what we were seeing because of the pandemic, but those have recovered nicely. The additional revenue that we received from one-time CARES Act money came through, which helped to defray some of the pandemic costs. Also, our real estate remains strong in the area, and property taxes stable. And this is really because of the values in the Bay Area remaining high. And also, we're seeing that the construction permitting activity is continuing to exceed budget in our city this year. And also, future relief. We do expect to receive some, the American Rescue Act monies of 2.1 million, and we'll be talking about that further in the presentation today. But those monies are used to replace revenue losses and also to support other projects. And that money will be coming through the, I think, the state, and it will probably be 60 to 90 days from now, and would need to be spent by the end of 2024 calendar year. Just so, just on the right, you can see the property taxes continue to trend very strongly. Next slide, please. So one revenue downward trend that we saw this year was in the property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees. And this is really because of a shift of school districts into the basic aid category. What that means is that the, that district's property taxes are sufficient to cover the guaranteed minimum funding for that school. What that also means is that the pool of property taxes that are available to pay the motor vehicle license fees is lower. And so that's what has caused this trend to be downward. There are a number of things that the, the county is partnering with Napa County on to bring forward a legislative solution for a permanent state backfill, and the town will support that when that comes forward. In addition, the county has filed for a budget item in the state budget to backfill this. But for this purpose of our 2122 budget, we remain conservative and kept the trend in place and assumes no recovery. But there may be a recovery in the future, but this will be one of those areas that we'll need to continue to watch over, over the next several years. Next slide, please. This was our COVID dashboard for this year. This is to track potential impacts for areas that we're, we're watching as far as financial impact. Just a couple of points here. One, property taxes is on track, and we do see a 1.02% CPI increase next year, where 2% is really the cap. So it is a little bit softer. However, we have seen that our assessed values and property taxes are at 4.3% next year, which is consistent with the county level. And so still a very healthy growth. We've talked about the excess ERAF and the property taxes in lieu. We'll be watching that. As far as investment earnings, our section 115 pension trust has recovered and doing well. Our lay freight will continue to go down, so we'll continue to watch that. As far as our reserve levels, those are all intact. And as far as our debt and long-term liabilities, there's been no issues with our long-term debt. However, we are continuing, watch the CalPERS board as they review what the potential discount rate might be in the future. Last year's results for investment earnings did not meet their benchmark. And so what that means is that should they bring down the discount rate, then, then all the cities would need to pay more in their annual contribution. And so that's something that we really watch. However, the, the city council has done a number of things to really help mitigate if there is an increase going forward, and that is by setting up a section 115 pension trust, which those monies are used and accumulated to defray costs in budgetary impacts in future years. So right now, that trust has about $5 million in it, and those monies would be used in five to 10 years over the course. And we draw down on that, that trust as, as we see those increases to help kind of even out our budgetary impact. As far as the recovery, again, we are seeing stimulus money, but we are not in, we don't have a full recovery of the economy and the, the Sematia County is not in green yet. So we're not completely through, through, but we are getting, improving very rapidly. One thing that's not on this fiscal dashboard, because it didn't relate to COVID, but one of the things that the town is watching and, and actively managing is the emerging drought situation. And so there will be a full drought management plan that is brought forward, actually, it's called an urban management water plan that will be brought forward by Paul Willis in the June session. And that will help to look at what our drought response would be for the town going forward. From a financial perspective, the city council, when they adopted the rates in this last five-year series, put into a number of, a number of protection measures that will help in the case of a drought, and we will be actively managing and watching our usage over the course of this year. One of those is that the increase in fixed charges, there was, we increased those to be up to 30% of revenue. So that helps to stabilize revenue. The other is the revenue stabilization factors, which would be added on to the existing volumetric charges, should they be needed. And those are lined up with either a 10%, 20% or more drought, lower usage. And so those would be put into place should, should it be necessary. But that would be something that staff would bring forward based upon analyzing the, the results. And as a standard practice, if there's no drought impact prior to October, that's when we normally look at that on an annual basis for approval of January rates. So we'll be coming back to you in October, assuming everything is stable to that point. Okay, next slide, please. So the range of volatility in the 2021 budget, the current year budget, not knowing a lot at the time that that was adopted, was, we thought there may be a range of impact of .4 to 1.2 million dollars. And you can see from the list below, we're, we're trending well below that impact. And so with that, we've been able to bring forward to city council some approval of some of the $6 million worth of deferments that were put into place. That was a, a good practice, not knowing what was, what we were heading into. But now that we're stable, and we're seeing that our 2021 is projected to be better than budget at .1 million added to reserves versus an adopted that was a net draw of .5. So all in all, a fairly stable year for us. Okay, next slide, please.
Hey, Jan, can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
Hello, Jan?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, good. The four-point, the 4.3% property tax exemption, is that a locked-in number, or is that still based on what, is that based on what the county told us to expect? So it's pretty much locked in?
Yes, that's based on the current assessment roll tracker. So that is directly from the county. And sometimes we see that that number actually gets even higher between now and the end of the locking of the roll in July. However, there, the county is saying not to expect that this year because of a number of factors overall. But what we have on the roll right now is, is locked in, yes.
Okay. And then secondly, as a county expert, and I presume it may be too early to tell now that I think about it, but wondering if the county's experience a significant number of foreclosures or not on, on the properties in the county.
What the counties, the counties, as far as real estate's kind of, kind of the profile in the county, real, a single-family residential has remained relatively strong. It's really been more in the commercial space that's been more of a challenge. And so that's really where they're seeing more of the revaluation of the assessed valuations is in the commercial space and not in the, the single-family residential.
Okay, thank you. That, I was wondering about that. That's, that's good news, I guess.
Okay, so this is what the state trend for 2122, what they use kind of in their projections. And this is from the Legislative Analyst Office for California, some of the leading indicators that they use for economic. You can see personal income is expected to grow, unemployment, at least when this slide was put together, is, you know, expected to come back down. Consumer price index is, is to go up, and housing permits, which is a key factor for us, is expected to go up. So statewide, they're still expecting a, a strong housing permit activity. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we also look at is what is happening with, with housing. And this is from the California Association of Realtors back in February of 2021. Existing home sales are up, existing home prices are up, and the inventory is very low. And so again, just shows the strength of the real estate at this point in time and leading into 2122. Next slide, please. So this is just a budget at a glance. So the total budget is $65 million. This includes all the funds. That's a $1.5 million increase to, to, which is 2%. The general fund has revenue increases of points of about $400,000 or 1.3%, expenditures of 1.7 million or 6%, a draw in reserves of 700,000. And this is really attributable to one-time project costs and capital funding. And what you'll see is that the overall operating structure of the general fund is, is strong. So this is kind of one-time monies that's used, using reserves. And the total reserves are 28.2 million. And that, that does, this picture does not include the American Rescue Act monies of 2.1 million in, in revenue. That was one of the questions that the FAC had was, should those revenues be included in here? We have included a lot of the program costs associated with it. But given that we will need, we don't have guidance yet from the federal government on the programs that we can actually use, unless that comes forward shortly, that would probably, more likely be a mid-year update. Okay. And the budget complies with all the policies and debt requirements. Next slide, please. Okay, these are some details around the proposed budget. Next slide, please. So the approach for this current year, for the budget year, is really, is a very conservative approach. But it also provides the resources necessary to accomplish the 2122 goals, and it also meets the reserves and the, and the budget policies. The budget does link, link the, the goals to the goal setting that was outlined. And we have had a number of public meetings and input sessions with the city council. The first step in that was a management group meeting in, in January with the city council for goal setting, just at the department goals and, and receive feedback. The, the second step was in February, which is a city council goal setting, which established the 2122 goals for the town. And then we're going through our budget review process. First was the Financial Advisory Committee meeting. Now we have the budget study session today. And then in June, there would be a budget review and adoption. Now we're going to turn to the 2122 goals, and Anne Ritzner will be walking you through those goals.
So this is just a brief review of the goals that were set in February. These are the council's policies. They fall into five priority areas. The first priority area is community and customer service. And the council as a whole was really looking at improving communication and transparency with the community by enhancing our website, creating a policies and value statement, purchasing new agenda management and records retention software. I'm continuing our discussion with, on housing, developing a continuity of operations plan, preparing our post-pandemic reopening plan, I'm continuing to invest in one of our most valuable resources, our staff with training, development, retention, and recruitment, and then staying on top of legislation that has a significant impact to Hillsborough that includes both our planning and land use legislation, the REACH codes, wireless regulations, Senate Bill 1383 for climate pollutants, including methane and hydrofluorocarbons and black carbon gases, the foodware ordinance in conjunction with the county, and then any stormwater, water conservation and flood inundation regulations, as well as our own approach with our leaf blower ordinance. Next slide, please. Our second priority area is financial stability. And one is to prepare a long-term financing plan for our Storm drain capital program and any new police facility. Secondly, is to prepare rate updates and studies. As Jan mentioned, we look at solid waste, water and sewer coming up in the next year, as well as implementing our new financial system, which our finance department has started in earnest, and it is a two-year project. And we also want to be responsive to the changing economic conditions with COVID, and we'll continue our dashboard. We'll also be preparing pension pre-funding analysis as we move forward. And Jan mentioned that earlier in her presentation as one of the, the areas that we will watch closely with CalPERS. We're also going to be evaluating interest rate swap alternatives caused by the elimination of LIBOR, which is what we tied our swap to. We'll be completing the RFP for IT services and support and welcoming a new IT services team to the town. And then we are continuing to track and apply for grant funding when it's available. Next slide, please. Our third priority area is land use planning, and this is going to be a significant priority area for the town. We're commencing with the housing element as well as the general plan update. We'll be looking at town-owned land for future needs. That includes both police and our fire facilities. We'll be developing a general housing policy to address our state mandated requirements. And that may include workforce housing and other types of housing units. We're going to be implementing an update of our permit tracking software, which actually, we're just on the verge. So that should be one of the first things we get completed on July 1st. We will continue to partner with the Hillsborough Beautification Committee on the Eucalyptus Pathway Project, as well as development of trails and open space. I'm very excited for next year will be the beginning of the development of plans for the Baywood property donation, making sure that we have a master plan in place before the property is actually donated to the town. Jan mentioned earlier that the town is in the process of preparing its urban water management plan and a drought resiliency plan in advance of any kind of mandatory action that the state may take. And we are also in the process of updating the town SCADA system, which is our system that manages our water system, making sure that it is secure against any kind of cyber attack. Next slide, please. We could not do anything without our community partnerships in this community. And the priorities for next year include working with our Firewise Hillsborough and our Central County Fire Department to address the issues of a wildland urban interface. In addition to that, implementing the wildland urban interface program and inspections, which I'm happy to report are on track to be completed this year. We'll continue to work with Firewise Hillsborough and the Hillsborough Neighborhood Network in our Zone Haven Training, which is the new emergency evacuation program countywide. Will also be, we are currently participating in a multi-agency hazardous mitigation plan update, and that will be coming to you next year. We are going to be continuing to partner with Hillsborough Beautification Foundation to improve park facilities, landscaped islands, and looking at other opportunities for roadways in town. And you'll have a presentation later this evening from HBL. We're going to be working with Hillsborough Recreation to improve our programs and look at facilities. And we also want to increase the participation from our aging community. We'll be coordinating with the Village of San Mateo County to do a partnership in neighbor helping neighbor as we support individuals who want to age in place, stay in their own homes. And then we will continue with excellent public safety services. Next slide, please. The last priority area is regional partnerships. And we will continue to conduct studies and develop partnerships for the new Highline Water Project. Very excited that both the City of Millbrae and the City of Burlingame see great value in coordinating this project to develop an alternative to water supply for the three communities that would be at the top of the hill instead of the bottom of the hill. We will continue to participate and provide representation to the Clean Energy, Peninsula Clean Energy, JPA, as well as Basca and 21 Elements, RICAPS, NPDES, the Airport Community Roundtable, the Council of Cities, ABEC Plan, and SBWMA. We are very involved in what is, what are very successful regional partnerships and regional organizations. In addition to that, we've joined several regional partnerships to address housing and the legislative issues that come with that. And pleased that in June, you'll be meeting our legislative lobbyist, who is working with our regional partners. We also, we're directed by council to develop strategies to improve energy resiliency. And to that, we will also be updating our climate action plan. So you have some very ambitious policies for next year, but we've included the necessary funding and resources in your budget to meet those demands. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or turn this back to Jan.
Are there any questions on the priorities, on the priorities before we move to the next slide? Will be somewhat informal, so just speak up if you have a question. I'll recognize you.
Through the mayor?
Yes, Marie.
I, I do have a question for our city manager, and that is, in terms of the IT, and I'm delighted that we're going out for the RFP, is there any considerations and focus on the, the cyber attack? You know, there's been reports on the small entities, local government agencies, private industries being hacked or attacked for the cybersecurity. Is that separate from the IT, or is this something that, as a region that we discuss? Or do we go out as a city to look into those areas?
So that's an excellent question. We are incorporating cybersecurity into the contract with our new provider, and you'll see that in June, they will be required to have cybersecurity insurance as well as training. They will help us develop our cybersecurity plan, actually take it from where it is now to where it needs to be. And then in addition to that, we are working with Plan JPA to have cyber insurance in place in case we do have an issue. And with that cyber insurance in place, we also have them as a third resource. Should something happen, they would be able to come in and assist us. So we have, we kind of have a three-level, we have our current existing program, we have our new provider who'll be coming in. And in addition to that, we have cyber insurance through Plan JPA.
I was just going to add what you just mentioned, Anne. PCE just substantially increased its cyber insurance. Clearly, you have it on the list, and that's, that's good.
Yeah, I would note, Marie, I think, I appreciate you raising the issue because I've noticed recently a fair amount of concern over the heightened attacks on small towns, particularly under a ransomware, where they effectively want a fair sum of money to return your data to you. Not that they ever do, they probably still use it. So I really appreciate that question and your feedback, Anne, because it is a concern. I, I assume also, it wasn't said, but I, but I know we've talked about the past. We've got a really good backup system off-site in case of emergency, but backed up in case we got hacked, too. Is that not correct?
That is correct. We do, we do daily backups. Yeah. And that is in a, in a remote location.
Yeah, thank you. Are there other questions or comments for Anne? Okay, I would note, if the public is listening, we did go through these in some detail at the goal-setting meeting. So we've, we've already gone through it at least once, if not twice. So just for their information. Okay, Anne, I'll turn it back to you.
I'll turn it back to Jan.
Thank you. Next slide, please. This is the organization in the budget next year. And you can see there's no new headcount for next year that is requested. And the organization, department heads are all listed here with their, with their respective departments and their headcount associated with all of those. And then also listed are some of the advisory boards and the joint power boards. Next slide, please. This is, where does all the money come from? So this is, what are all the funding sources for all of the funds added together? So this is, what are all the funding sources for all of the funds added together? And that total $65 million of revenue that is being used this coming year. And you can see that the majority of that comes from taxes and then from enterprise. And enterprise are the water and sewer enterprises. And those are primarily from user rates for sewer and for water. And those cover all the operations, all of the capital, all of the debt service that you see when, when we do our rate studies. One of the other areas to note here in the, in the pie is the use of reserves. And that is something that you'll see that number varies every year. And that's really driven by the timing of our capital improvements. We accumulate reserves in some years and some years we spend that money on the capital. So it's a kind of a save and spend cycle. And this happens to be the year where we're spending it. And so those reserves have been accumulated in prior years. You can see that the American Rescue Plan we have outside of that pie because that again has not been included in, in these monies at this time. Next slide, please.
Hey Jan, can you back up one minute? Under, under your pie chart, could you help me understand, would they better intergovernmental compared to governmental? Spray at the bottom, it's.
Yeah, the intergovernmental are the items that are coming from sources that are restricted, such as gas tax revenues, et cetera, those kinds of revenues. And then the governmental are coming from. Sorry, I'm going to have to look that up.
Absolutely.
We have, I can look it up in just a second. Hold on, if you want to, I can look that up. We slice everything so many different ways that.
Yeah.
Let me see.
I'm assuming those are non-restricted governmental funds, but.
They are, but hold on one second here. Okay. So what I'm looking at is on page like 88, 89ish. And so the. It's all the, it's all the special revenues basically is the, and then the other. Yeah, I will get back with you on that. How about that?
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
And I know Rich is going to be looking up that answer right now as we speak.
Thank you.
So where does the money go? So next slide, please. So of the 65 million, water and sewer is again the spending there for capital and operations and debt service. And then the other pieces are the other funds, which includes public safety or police and for the fire JPA. We have general government, which are all the support services, including all of the IT infrastructure. We have building and planning and the library is, we, we contribute into the library for the use of Burlingame and San Mateo. And we also provide our recreation services through the Hillsborough Recreation JPA. And then we have street operations. So that's, those are kind of the, the spending areas for total town. Next slide, please. So this is the overall budget appropriation, all funds, 65 million as compared to the prior year. And you can see the dollar change is about 1.5 million or 2%. And this is by fund spending. And so in the general fund, it's about a $1.7 million increase or 6%. And that's really being driven and you'll see the little notes on the side by the cost of living. Because labor is one of the major areas that the town provides services using labor, as well as the purse contribution costs that are going up, as well as the project spending. The capital projects is where all the street projects are awarded. And you can see that in 2021, there's a very large amount. As you may recall from the last city council meeting, those street projects were just awarded. And those will be conducted during the summer months and should conclude at the end of the summer. And very large street projects, resurfacing projects there. So the spinning occurred last year in the budget for budgetary purposes. The asset replacement is, is really related to software and vehicles. And in the water fund, that's really the timing of any kind of capital improvements. And in the sewer fund, it's timing of capital improvements. And then also this coming year is the increase for the contract with San Mateo Wastewater Treatment Plant contractual costs, which is an addition of 2.4 million. So again, overall, 1.5 million of spending at 2% increase. Next slide, please. These are the budget assumptions. We've kind of gone through a lot of these. Headcount, no new headcount, 3% cost of living budget estimate. As far as the general fund assessed valuation going up 4.3%. We are putting in construction permitting revenue growth flat for conservatism. The, the Central County Fire Department contribution is going up 5.1%. This was adopted by the Central County Fire Board more recently, of which we have two of our city council members who are board members. And then in the water fund, we have an estimated average increase of 3% for water rate increases. But again, that will be reviewed by city council and the need for that would be reviewed in October for January. There's the SFPUC is not increasing their wholesale water rate cost to us this year, coming year. For sewer, we have an estimated rate increase of 4%. And that's going through our Proposition 218 process, which you'll see a public hearing on in June. But that would be estimated at 4%. And then we have the $2.4 million increase for the town share of the San Mateo Hand Water Treatment Plant. Next slide, please.
I have a question, Jan. Can you just shed a little light on the cowper's rates grow approximately 7% of salary? Just explain that a little bit, please.
Sure. The cowper's develops a methodology to charge the cities every year. And this just calibrates what that charge is going to be based as a percentage of salary. And so they come up with an actuarially determined amount that each city has to pay. And it just calibrates to this number.
I see. So, so seven percent, so approximately 7% of an employee's salary per annum is what we need to put into the cowper's program. Is that right?
This is how much as a percentage of salary, it's, it's growing. So for instance, if the miscellaneous category of the miscellaneous pension plan, which is all the, the non-safety employees. Let's just say that, 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 that rate in 2021 as a percent of salary was 30%. It would mean that we would be adding it 7% to that. So it would be going to 37%.
Thank you.
As an example.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jan, I was just going to add, I know Al asked about the intergovernmental. So hi, everybody. That makes up basically it's 650,000 for the vehicle impact fees. And then the rest that make up, it's about 1.1 million. Those are all the service charges. So that's your planning application, building plan, check fees, scan fees, police service, alarm monitoring, all those different service fees. That's what makes up the intergovernmental fees.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, Rich. Appreciate that.
Sorry about that.
You know, and I don't know how long Jan's been here, but that's the only question out of the thousand she's gotten I've ever seen her momentarily not know the answer to.
I know. And, and I hear you. Yes. Thank you.
Off the top of your head.
Yes. Yes, sometimes, you know, there's 400, almost 300 and something pages in the book and every once in a while. Yeah. But thank you. Okay. Next slide, please. This slide shows the link of the budget items to the goals. And overall, we have 2.1 million one-time budget to deliver on the goals. I'm not going to go through each one of these, but you can see there's one time and then there's ongoing. A couple of items here, one on the facilities, it's about partway down. And also you can see the city council priority column as well. And that was established during the city council goal setting session. But the one midway down is the fire stations and other facilities of $800,000. That's really to repair the fire stations and purchase some emergency generators or replace those. It's also for some public works administrative offices, roofing and some other repairs. And then there's also a $250,000 contribution or, or reserve for police station improvements that we'll be seeing going forward as the police station is in need of, of repairs or replacements. Let's see.
Are we, are we establishing a separate reserve for replacement of the police department facility? I, I think the plans and process being developed, but I don't think we've had anything to date, have we?
We don't have a formalized plan. So this $250,000 is really just kind of a placeholder for that. And until it's determined what the, what the exact plan is, whether it's a repair or a placement. And a lot, there will be a lot more work that will be needed on that to figure out the cost of that and the funding sources. But this would be one of those, one of those avenues would be to, to use.
Well, I appreciate very much seeing it, by the way, because I think is a, a higher priority for us or at least an ongoing high priority. So.
Yeah, I, I would also echo that because of the, the fact that our, our police department has such a, in terms of cybersecurity and, you know, being sought out by other departments in the region to assist in many of the areas. I, I think that, you know, in terms of just having a dedicated areas for the, for their processing, it does require temperatures and, you know, and the evidence storage and all this other stuff. I can only imagine that it's critical to have the facility upgraded to the level of the services that we provide.
Okay. I have a question, Jan, on the general plan, which I know is a tremendous workload. Do, do we pay that every eight years? Is that what we paid 750,000 eight years ago? Do you know? I mean, is that, is that the going rate for doing the general plan every eight years?
This is the general plan and the housing element. So it's both of those combined. And we have, they do, this is the, the current rate of, of doing those plans. So.
Anne, I'm on as well, if I, if I could be helpful.
Sure.
Okay, great. So hi, Vice Mayor Krollick and council members.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi. Yeah. So not every eight years is it this full amount? This is because this is the greater general plan update cost as well as the housing element update cost. So every eight years, the cost will typically be lower than this. But since we're updating the entire general plan, the cost is more substantial.
So the general plans every 15 years and then in between is the housing element?
That's correct. That's correct. So usually you'll have about two housing element updates within any one general plan update cycle. And 15 years isn't mandated anywhere, but that is kind of the California standard, just to keep the, the vision and the policies fresh and up to date with what the community's vision is.
So it's about, okay. All right. Thank you. It's, it's a big number, isn't it?
It's a really big number and much of that has to do with the California Environmental Quality Act analysis that's going to go along with the change in the requirements for the housing element. So typically the housing element's pretty straightforward and the larger chunk of expenditure goes to the general plan update. We're seeing a little bit of reverse this time because the, the numbers are so substantial for the housing element update that really that, that's going to be the heavy lift. And that's where more of the expenses are going to be spent this time. But typically it's the other way around.
And, and we, we hire outside and outside firm to help us with that. Is that where most of that cost goes to the?
That's correct. Specifically with the, with the secret work.
Thank you. Thanks, Sarah.
My pleasure.
Okay. A couple of other ones, just to go through one plans for you with this pathway. Again, that would be used for professional services to develop that pathway. And then another one, workforce housing and facilities, town facilities, $150,000 toward that program as well. So those are some of the larger items.
I'll just, on the eucalyptus pathway, the 223,000 is actually for curb and gutter work. For, for that actual plan and HBF is doing a lot of the, the actual plan itself, the design.
I have one last question. $50,000 for the storm drain funding plan. That's separate from the amount we're funding every year for a storm drain. This is for a plan to figure out how we fund it long-term. Is that correct? Or am I misunderstanding that?
Yes, correct.
Okay, that's for the plan. Okay. Thank you.
I, I have a, I have a question or comment on the Hillsborough Rec programs, the one time cost of 52,000 and we don't have anything budgeted going forward. Are we just operating with what we've been doing in the past? So is there an anticipation that those funds will increase? The reason I ask that question is because we're getting a lot of feedback from the community that there's a really strong need for more recreation, especially not just for the students, but for the adults as well in terms of opportunities for other services. And the Hillsborough Rec is potentially a, a program that could help bridge that.
We, we put it in the ongoing, but we, they've asked for 52 for next year.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next slide, please. Okay, now moving to the general fund specifically. We have a 1.3% revenue growth, 5.6% operating expense growth. And what you can see here is that net operating, we have excess revenues over expenditures. That does show a healthy operating fund or the general fund. And then we have capital transfers of 2.8 million and that it gets us to a drawn reserves of $720,000 for the budget. Next slide, please.
Hey Jan, could you explain capital transfers for us? I, I've had that question. I don't think I've answered it very well.
The capital transfers are funding for capital programs that are spent in other funds. And so one of the primary ones of those is the storm drain program, which we don't have a source of funding for. And so those transfers get transferred over to the sewer fund where the storm drain funding, where the capital program spending occurs. And so it's, it really is essentially a capital item, but it's a transfer technically from the general fund. That would be one example of that. It would also. I'm sorry?
I, I'm sorry. That's the, that's a big one, right? I mean, for the 2.1 this year, that's what one, I, I thought it was fairly large. I'm trying to remember what it was, but.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's 1.2. And then I think there's also capital funding for, for facilities as well. So some of the items that you saw on the other page for fire stations and for those other facilities also don't have a dedicated source of funding. And so that comes from the general fund. So, you know, those capital transfers are identified and, and we put line items to those every year and lay out what are we going to be spending that money on? And then we create a transfer dollar amount associated with that. So we have details in the budget book that can lay out all the spending out.
And Jan, just to add, it's, yeah, it's 1,021,000 for transfers to the capital fund for the facilities you mentioned. And then it's 1.8 transferring to Storm Drain.
Oh, 1.8. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to, sorry, I just want to make sure I, I understand. I just want to, sorry, I just want to make sure I understand this. So we have excess revenues over expenditures, $3 million this budget and over $2 million next budget. But we, next budget, we have a deficit, and it looks like it's because mostly from this capital transfer, right? So that's mostly storm drains, basically?
1.8 is storm drain and the rest is facilities.
Is facility, so that's leading to this deficit next year. And then we're running a deficit on our operating expenses, just just clarify. So I don't remember our ever seeing a deficit before. So is this a one-time thing? Is it structural, or are you about to explain more of that?
No, it's a good question. So if you look at the 2021, 3.3 million, okay? So you'd say, well, how come we're not at 3.3 million in 2122? Or even better, right? We'd always hope to be better, but and the reason is because of the one-time projects. So if you go back to that slide of one-time projects, we said almost 2.1 million is needed. So some of those are in the capital transfer line there, but some of those are in that operating expenditure line. So it's kind of in two places on here, but that's really what's driving that net operating revenue greater than expenditure to be lower than the prior year. It's a great question. So if we lift those out next year, if you didn't have those, that number would be better, would look better.
So I'm similarly on the storm drainage, it's my understanding that it would be an ongoing cost? Or is it a one-time, are you saying it's a one-time transfer for the storm drainage?
For the capital transfers, also a very good question. So one of the, one of the one of the analyses that the town is going to be doing this year will be related to storm drain funding. So storm drain funding is a $35 million, 30-year program. So it's a pretty major capital program. And right now, there isn't a dedicated source of funding except for what we're funding out of the general fund. And so it is an area that we want to try to see if we can find a source of funding so that we're relieving the general fund of needing to support that for the next 30 years. And then the other items that are in there, the million dollars, that was the list of fire stations and all those other things that we talked about. Those don't have a dedicated source of funding either. So again, as we go through and look at our facility plan and our financing and sources of revenue for that, that will help address some of some of that capital transfer need. And so those will be important kind of building blocks to our financial structure going forward.
And I think the reason we call it capital transfers rather than capital improvements is because there some of this transferred to funds that we may have the funds repay us. Right? So until we get clarity on that, we don't use the word capital improvements. Am I correct on that?
Well, the reason we use capital transfers is the spending is not occurring. Yeah, the actual capital improvement spending is not occurring in the in the general fund. So it's a transfer to another fund of which then it's going to get spent. So, but to answer your question about, yeah, yes, that's, that's why it's called a transfer versus capital spending.
I thought that when we started funding the storm drain because of the need to do so with no funding source, we reserved the right to charge that enterprise, the sewer enterprise fund the cost. Not that we would, but we reserved the right to do so. I'm thinking because that is to some people would argue that's a sewer cost. And others would say not necessarily a sewer cost, it's independent, which there's no separate enterprise fund for. But anyway, I think that's why we call it transferred. I probably confused it more than clarified it.
Right. There was a discussion a few years ago about whether that should be a loan or whether that should be a transfer. In other words, a transfer is, it doesn't get paid back versus a loan, which would indicate that it's going to get paid back to the general fund. That was a discussion, I think, not necessarily at the city council level, maybe. I think it actually was at one of the budget sessions. And it was determined at that time that the general fund had healthy operations and that that would continue to be a transfer and not a loan. There are some technical considerations that we would need to look to if the sewer fund was to actually make that into a loan. And that has to do with proposition 218. And the sewer rates right now are being charged for sewer operations. And so they're not being charged for storm drain. There's some connection there, but it's not 100%. And so we would really have to look at that and put together analysis and a policy if we were going to start to use the sewer fund and loan money and pay that back. We need to to put a formal program together on that.
And I think that the $50,000 that we set aside for storm drain funding will, part of that analysis will be what's the best way to do that? And what are the, what are the risks associated with tying it to anything with sewer? Or giving it to do something that's standalone just for storm drains?
And by the way, if I remember, we had our auditors review this and sign off on this in terms of it being the proper accounting. So there's questions on that. That's been cleared by a third party.
Yes, thank you.
Is, I have a question. It has the state looked at or any other municipalities looked at storm drain improvements? Is that, can that be funded by a fee that we're allowed to pass through to residents?
Yes, and we're watching San Bruno closely, who has that right now. It is something that the voters have to vote on, so it would be a ballot measure.
But by the way, Marie is on the line, but at the CK meeting, she posed three free questions, or the CK did, one of which is what are the cities doing on storm drains? And this is not just an issue for us. I think it's an issue in every single city. And they're all struggling with how to fund it and whether or not a Prop 218 process would pass or not. So, you know, this, this is a pretty big and a pretty uniform issue across the board. And Marie, you may have more on it, but I sat through that workshop on it and and walk away realizing it's not just us in this bind.
Right. CCAG, through CCAG, is a JPA that, you know, all the member agencies were able to tap into the assistance. CCAG has developed and have worked with the 20 cities plus the county on the permit, you know, and so this is ongoing discussions. Cities in the peninsula varies from less than $10 per parcel to $100. So the range is, and I think the higher end is Burlingame in the hundreds range. And San Bruno is attempting to try to reach out to their residents and for vote on the increase of the the rates, and it has proven to be challenging. So this is going to be ongoing discussions. And certainly with the sea level rises, there are opportunity to address the storm drain issues too. So currently, there are discussions, but mainly as Anne says, then San Bruno is the most recent one that is going to attempt to go out to their residents for approval on the increase of the storm drain fee.
Okay. All right. Slide please. So this is a similar view, but of a general fund only. Whereas the other one was all funds combined. So we have $30.7 million forecasted in revenues. And the largest piece of that you can see is property taxes. There's also some other property tax related items such as excess ERAF and the BLF in lieu. And then a number of revenues come from construction permits and business licenses. And we have a public safety sales tax, sorry, a public safety tax, which Rich will be showing you in the fees section a little bit later. Franchise fees and service charges. Okay. Next slide, please. For the general fund, the top five revenues comprise almost 87% of the total. So these are the the top five, property taxes, public safety tax, excess ERAF, property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee and construction permits. Next slide, please. This gives more details around the general fund revenue growth and what's driving the dollar growth. Again, a year-over-year dollar change and percentage change. If you just look to the right, property taxes is by far the biggest dollar contributor to our increases next year. 4.1%, $789,000. The public safety tax is at its cap, so there's no increase in that. And then we've talked about monitoring excess ERAF and property taxes in blue. And we're showing conservatism in those so that we can monitor our risk. And then construction permits, we have put in, again, flat just for conservatism. And then all others, the biggest piece of that would be one-time revenues that are not reoccurring. And so overall, we get to a $400,000 increase in revenues or a 1% overall growth. Next slide, please. So here again, for the general finder, where the money goes. This is public safety, fire and police services and general government, capital transfers, building and planning, library and recreation services and streets. Okay, next slide, please. This is a look at the general fund expenditure growth details, again, a year-over-year dollar change. So you can see where the $1.6 million increase or 6% is coming from. And again, the provisional services are primarily from personnel and from our Central County Fire Department JPA. And so the personnel is growing 4.5% or $755,000, and the Central County Fire is going up 5.1% or $400,000. The materials and services and transfers are really driven by the project costs, one-time project costs. And that gets us to 1.6 million or 6% overall growth. Next slide, please. First, the general fund position, a reserve does comply with our policy. Our policy shows a minimum of 30% of operating expenditures to a goal of 50%. And you can see those numbers there, and that reserve is held for contingencies such as natural disaster, revenue volatility, infrastructure failure, or any other issue that the town requires reserves for. And to balance that, we have long-term liabilities of pension and other post-employment benefits, which is retiree health benefits, and that totals $40 million. Next slide, please. As far as the $28.2 million in reserves, this, these are the components that we have. First, we have a portion of that which is restricted, and that's the 5.1 million for the 115 pension trust. We have assigned reserves, and these are just held in case of capital improvement needs for storm drain, for sewer and for PG&E tree replacement. Those monies were received, and when those are used for that tree replacement, that reserve will be released. And then we have the contingency per policy. And then we have unassigned, which would remain as a reserve here for either future use or continued as reserved for protection, further protection in our reserves for a total of $28.2 million. Next slide, please. Okay, with this, I'm going to be turning it over to Rich Santiago, and he'll go through our capital improvement plan. Rich, there you go.
Year and a half of Zoom, you think I would have figured it out, so unmute, so sorry about that. Good afternoon, Mayor Royce and council. I'll be discussing the town five-year capital improvement summary. If you look at the right graph on the slide, you'll see the primary capital spending that comes from enterprise water and sewer funds, then followed by general government and streets capital. Then if you look on the left, the five-year funding sources, that chart, you'll see enterprise rates and reserves that makes up most of that image as well. The 40 million does cover, go towards the 47.9 spending of water and sewer. And then the rest are covered up by the general fund. And then all the street capital spending has the restricted monies that Jan kind of mentioned before dedicated to the street project. So that's like your Measure A, Measure M, Measure W, gas tax, SB1 road repair money, and then vehicle impact fees. And again, the street capital, the program for improvements is on a biennial plan. So we alternate accumulating and spending every other year. Next slide. And so this is the capital breakdown for the proposed 2122 year. The total is 11.4 million, separated into the different program areas. For water, there's tank improvements, pump station projects, and the annual water main replacement program. That's ongoing. And then even though in the budget, it's not, does not have any work for 2122, there continues to be rollover and future spending plan for the anticipated Highline Water Project. For sewer, you have the annual priority basins, INI rehab program, along with lift stations, smoke testing, root removal and flow metering proposed for this fiscal year as well. Storm drain, the program continues to improve high priority projects, and this year it's 1.8 budgeted. And then for streets, for street resurfacing, you may notice that on, in the budget book, it doesn't have really significant CIP spending for 2122, but that's because there was 4.2 million originally budgeted, but we shifted it into 2021 due to the timing of the bidding and awarding of the resurfacing project. We set the project early in the year. It created a more competitive and advantageous environment for the town to order the project with specific ad alternates that Paul Willis included. You might remember, that's the one that got approved at the last April council meeting. But most of that work will occur this summer and fiscal year 2122. And then the final section of capital improvements is the 1.16 million for town facilities that Jan mentioned as well, and that's primarily due to different maintenance. But for water, sewer, storm drain and streets, all those are based on master plans that help prioritize the spending for each program each year. Next slide. And this is for the asset replacement spending, 2122, it forecasts 1.6 million. You can see the 600,000 is related to the IT software or equipment. And it mentioned, we have a number of big software replacement projects that we'll be working on throughout the year. Either we're implementing because we already awarded, or we will be awarding very shortly, as well as PCs, copiers, other IT equipment that's reached its useful life in these replacements. And then there's about 1 million budgeted vehicles, primarily in police and the public works divisions. That's based on replacement schedule as well, but also useful life, maintenance, cost evaluation to determine if it needs replacement. Usually, we rely on police and public works to determine which ones need replacement in order to continue functioning at that task. Police usually replace three every year, and then public works, it just depends again on how the vehicle is doing. Throughout the year, staff reviews the asset replacement sheet with finance, usually at year end, but also prior to the budget and just to see if any adjustments or shifts or new vehicles need to be added. Next slide, I think actually the next one's Jan.
Thank you, Rich. Any questions on capital? One of the questions that came up in the FAC was more of a question about. One of the questions that came up in the FAC was more of a question about electric vehicles and whether the town would be looking into those. And I think for police, they use the kind of what the state's requirements are. And in public works, they will be looking into as fleet replacements come, become available. They would look into into that for future replacements based on functionality and dependability. For the service use. Okay. All right, sewer fund. Overall, four percent increase in sewer rates for the proposed study. One point eight million dollars coming in the non-operating revenue for storm drain capital program. That's the transfer from the general fund, so we were talking about how it's not a capital spending in the general fund. This is where you see that transfer coming in to the sewer fund. And then you also see the San Mateo Clean Water Treatment Plant. Spending of two point four million included in the operating and and debt service and category there. And six point three million dollars with a capital spending in the current year. So what that gets is is a drawn reserves, again, primarily driven by timing of capital spending. And the total reserve of seven point eight million is consistent with the rate study that is under review. So that is a very consistent number with that rate study. Next slide, please. This is a long-range projection for the sewer fund. And what you see here on the road, on the the tabs are all the spending categories. And then the top line is the revenue and the bottom line are the, is the reserves. And so what you can see is that over the next year, that the total spending goes up. And that's really in the orange category and that's the treatment costs. That's for the San Mateo Weasewater Treatment Plant increase. And then you can also see in the yellow, the capital improvements, you can see that trend as well. And you see that over the next couple of years, that the expenditures are a little greater than the revenues. And then it starts to make up ground and that's all very consistent with the rate study that you have seen in the March study session. Okay, next slide, please. On the water fund, again, the budget assumes a three percent increase in water rates. But again, we'll be reviewing that in October to see whether that's necessary. There's no change in in usage anticipated in this budget, but we'll be monitoring that. The SFPUC wholesale rate is not changing. And you can see that the net revenue under expenditures due to timing CIP cycle is one point two millions. It's a drawn reserves this year. And however, the reserves overall are in line with that cost of service study as well. Next slide, please. This is the water fund long-range plan, or sorry, projection. And it assumes a three percent increase in the charges. And it funds twenty million dollars of pay-go capital in the five-year period, which is a fairly significant amount of water capital. One of those larger projects would be the Highline Project. And in this, in this projection, you can see the yellow, sorry, the. The blue bars where you start to see that step up in twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five. That's really where you start to see the Highline Water spending occurring. And at this point in this projection, we don't show the funding source for that yet. And so when that is established, you'll see this chart will look very different and it won't be drawing on reserves to the level that you see in this projection. Okay, next slide, please. As far as our debt, we have thirty one point six million dollars worth of debt, primarily in the certificates of participation. Our debt service is about two point eight million. And the debt service coverage in this proposed budget does meet the bond covenants. We do have an excellent bond rating on our bonds. And we do expect in this next year that we will be reviewing the two thousand six eight interest rates swap. Two thousand six A interest rate swap that is tied to LIBOR. And we have that FAC meeting coming up on that in June. As a first review. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, turning to Anne, she's gonna be walking through the American Rescue Plan.
Thank you, Jan. I'm just gonna give a very brief overview of the American Rescue Plan. Actually, Jan and I just received the final rules from the feds this afternoon. And it's a hundred and something pages long, so it's gonna take us a little while to go through there. But there are four major categories that the funds can be used for. And Hillsborough has already been notified that we will receive two point one million dollars. As long as the spending is in these four categories. First is the response to public health emergencies. And those categories allow a community to take, for example, a facility or a program. That was not as responsive to the pandemic as it could be. Or there was spending by an agency to be more responsive for during the pandemic. And use those funds either to prepare for the next major disaster, to make sure that your community is ready. Or to actually pay for some of the programs or supplies or facilities. That a community may have invested in during the pandemic. The second category is for premium pay for essential workers or grants to their employees or employers. And this really doesn't pertain to the town of Hillsborough. Because we continue to operate and continue to to pay our workers and we're able to accommodate. Essential workers in the workplace. The third area is revenue loss. And for some of our neighboring cities, there was significant revenue loss during the pandemic. Whether it was hotel tax, sales tax and a variety of other fees and services. That had a significant impact in, say, Brolin Gamar, San Mateo or Millbrae. We are not in that that area, although we we did see some revenue loss. That that comes from our countywide and our statewide revenues and we'll take a look at that. The fourth category is is really to start looking at how we can improve infrastructure in our community. And that those funds are to be used for water projects, sewer projects and broadband infrastructure. Or technology. Those are areas in which Hillsborough, of course, has some significant projects that we could invest in. And so staff has met preliminarily to just kind of do some brainstorming. And if we turn to the next slide, please. These are some of the draft potential uses and we'll take this list and start comparing it against the federal rules. That just came out this afternoon. One is to look to see if there is a way to use some of this funding. To either replace or repair the police facility and rethink the town hall structure. Part of the funding should be used to create reliable facilities. That would allow for safe distancing of our workforce and also for places where a community can come for services. The next area that we looked at, which does fall under the broadband and the technology, as well as a response to COVID. Is improving our council chamber tech facilities. We will more than likely be required as the state opens back up through legislation. That will require a live stream and hybrid meeting to occur in our council chamber. So the term is room with a Zoom. And we'll need to be making those kinds of changes to our council chamber. To allow those who want to participate in person, as well as those who would like to participate through Zoom. Another area that we're looking at is project management for our key projects. That's to get the Tobin Clark COVID walking space project up and going. As well as the master plan for Baywood, which would have allowed if we had that that facility. An outdoor space for the community to gather. There may be a way to look at some of our general plan implementation. And then, of course, technology. We may be able to apply some of the funds to our agenda management software that integrates video and live stream. So room with a Zoom plus your agenda, our records management. So that we can provide information to the public without paper. And then additionally, looking at our planning software for a paperless environment. We also are going to see if any of our sustainability projects may be eligible for some of this funding. Including the electrification of government vehicles and charging stations. And last but not least, is looking at our fire services. As you noted, we had eight hundred thousand dollars in the budget for our fire stations. Part of the upgrades include HVAC and making sure that those are safe and efficient. Facilities for our workforce, because we do share that workforce as part of our JPA. And then any additional equipment that they may have either purchased or will be purchasing. In support of emergency services for our community. We may also be able to put some of this funding to work on the Highline Water Project. We did apply for earmark as an earmark project with Senator Spears office. Congresswoman Spears office and we were not successful in our grant. But we're going to continue to look for getting the Highline Water Project shovel-ready for future infrastructure funding. And those are just our thoughts. I'd be happy to discuss or take any of your suggestions.
Any comments or questions by the council? And I think this is well thought out, it's still early, but I think, I think there's some opportunities here. Particularly the Highline Water Project in the, in our, in our police department. But I'm not overlooking the fact that for new council meetings, we're gonna have to find a way to coordinate between live meetings and Zoom meetings. And that may take something, so.
Okay, next slide, please. We did implement a number of GFOA budget book requirements. They have a two-year implementation of which we need to comply in order to continue to get our certificate of achievement. And this is a list of the items that we implemented this year. We expect to have some additional requirements next year. Next slide, please. So this is the summary, so managing our twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget opportunities and risks. And the general fund will look to monitoring the stability of the revenue and making any adjustments as needed. In the water fund, we'll manage our water rates, our drought conditions and usage. Will develop the Highline Water Project. In the sewer fund, we'll monitor the water, the sewer fund rates. And we'll finalize the agreement with San Mateo for treatment. And then for debt, we'll be looking at our interest rate swap that is tied to LIBOR. And townwide, there will be a very large focus on the general plan, housing and land use for twenty one, twenty-two. We'll review and plan for long-term funding needs for facilities and housing. Plan for the American Rescue Plan revenues, analyze pension, pre-funding opportunities. And we'll implement CIP master plans and IST strategic plans. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. And then we will move to the last section, which will be fees and charges and Rich will be presenting that area.
Are there any questions by council at this point?
Really great presentation.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make a comment to. Thank the staff for the earmark projects, because you know, in this. Timing is everything and and whenever we have a shovel-ready project. It's a, it put us on a higher priority in terms of getting the funding. So appreciate the anticipation and and the planning.
Okay, let's go to the, to the fees and charges. So Rich, I think you have the four.
Yes, and I'll try to go through these fast for the sake of time. But here are the proposed master fee schedule for fiscal year twenty one, twenty-two. First with sewer, although the sewer rates are presented in the master fee schedule. Those are taken at council and adopted on a separate resolution. The proposed sewer rate, it's a four percent increase for twenty one, twenty-two. This is pending the approval of the proposed five-year rate study. The user rates pay for the cost of operations and capital, along with debt service for the sewer fund. And as you could see, the commercial or non-residential rates, they're presented here as well for sewer. Those are based on a formula, taking their three-year average of winter water use. So any variance that goes up or down is due to their actual water use during their hours of operations. And again, it's calculated based on the initial residential EDU or equivalent dwelling unit formula. Which is reflective of that four percent increase. And the water and sewer connection fees, those are also annually adjusted based on a CPI index that Public Works provides. It's the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. It's a two point seven percent increase for both connection fees, water and sewer this year compared to the previous fiscal year. Normally, those are adopted with the super rates, but they'll go separately tonight. Since again, the sewer rates are still in the five-year rate study to eighteen process. Next slide. And for the master fee schedule, last fiscal year, we only had a few changes. There was three proposed new fees and three changes to existing fees. They all came from the planning department, but the overall master fee schedule, it hasn't been updated since fiscal year twenty eighteen, nineteen. So this year in fiscal year twenty one, twenty-two, there are two new proposed fees. Twelve proposed deleted fees, seventy-nine revised fees, which could have a labor rate, staffing position. Staffing hours or consulting updates. And then thirty-seven revised fees, which purely just labor rate increases. And I'll go over those very quickly, next slide. The two new fees, again, both from planning. First one is the pre-application review process, a voluntary review process that an applicant can request. In order to get a more detailed review of the, of review prior to the formal submittal application. Quick example is if there's a new home, the applicant can opt into the pre-application review fee. To have extra time with the planner, so it's properly executed and submitted the first time with no issues or avoiding any delays. And then the second new fee, it's an accessory dwelling unit exception. And this is to reflect any town costs of staff administrative design review of an ADU exception. And it's just to ensure that town staff is recovering any costs for the review work being done. Next slide. And then along with the new fees and changes to existing fees, as mentioned, there are a handful of deleted fees that are proposed to be removed. However, the majority of these deleted fees, they're still provided to customers. However, the fee, master fee schedule has been revised, so these have been covered with an already existing fee. So for the majority of them, they're not really going away. Like the first two is the planning, for planning, it's the pre-application review, half an hour and additional pre-application meeting. Those have just been eliminated for, to clarify everything. And now they're part of that new pre-application review process to streamline the process more and be more beneficial to applicant. And still achieve cost recovery. The next four, you can see, they've been removed because they're already being captured in the ADRB landscape fee. And then that final planning fee, the ADRB satellite dish and antenna as a secondary item. That isn't typically reviewed by ADRB on its own independently. As it would go as part of a larger project review, that is already captured in a fee. Next slide. And then the same thing, these are the engineering fees. Again, the majority of them, they are already covered in another fee. But the one that is actually going away, it's the aerial topographic map. That used to be a fee that was provided back when that information wasn't readily available. But now the customer can actually go directly to San Mateo County to obtain. Next slide. And and that's it for the fees. The rest, as already mentioned, they've been revised either by labor rates, staffing hours or consulting costs. Again, with the goal to achieve full cost recovery for the services rendered. And with that, we'll take any questions you have. There is staff on the call from building, planning and engineering, in case there's any specific for. in case there's any specific further questions on the master fee schedule.
Do we have any questions or comments on the fee schedule? Christine?
No, no, not right now. I mean, my, my overall question is probably the question that we all have, which is the, the deficit in this year's budget and whether it's one-time and, and not structural moving forward.
We're going to come around for final comments, but specifically with fees. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, let's go to final comments on the total presentation. And, and any questions or comments you have overall. We'll start with Councilmember Cole.
No, I don't have any questions. I just want to thank the staff for very thorough presentation. Excellent, excellent work. Thank you.
Councilmember Schwang?
Again, I want to thank Jan and her staff and also all the departments in terms of working on this budget. It is a collaborative process. And, and most of the questions embedded at the FAC. So, and, and now through the council in terms of raising questions. And I do appreciate, again, like I said, the earmark projects, which is all very timely. And as to earlier at last month's presentation where Paul have moved the bidding of those road improvements to attract a better pricing. And I so appreciate those toughness behind the scheduling.
Councilmember May?
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to thank both Jan and Rich and Ann for the great presentations today. Informative slides and informative discussion. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Krollick?
Same thing. Thank you for a lot of work in this beautifully presented budget and the presentation. And then just the comment that I made earlier about the deficit.
Well, I, I have no specific questions. I would only note that while this budget shows a operation, operating fund deficit, it is consistent with policy because the cause for the operating deficit is for an investment construction project, which is allowed. But I would also note that this does not include $2.1 million of American, whatever that bill is called, that we're highly costly going to get, but it's not included in this. And if it was, the bottom line would be a, what is, whatever, it'd be a pretty positive number. But for, for accounting purposes, since it is not included in this budget, but I would just note that for the record. Other than that, Jan, Rich, and the entirety department, excellent job as always. This is very informative and how you can get through it in an hour and a half is beyond me. But you do so in an incredibly informative and in open ways. So thank you so much. Any last comments from Ann or anybody else? Sorry, Jan?
Jan? Sorry, I, I do want to mention that the book will move forward as it is into the public hearing with one exception, which is we need to correct the mission statement in the fire department section of the write-up in the departmental section. And so we'll go ahead and make that correction, and that will be the only change to the budget book.
Thank you. Thank you. Hearing, no further questions or comments. The, this study session is now adjourned. And council will move directly into closed session because we're about eight minutes, seven minutes late on that. And I don't want to keep the public waiting if they are. So with that, thank you very much. Great job. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Proceeding straight into closed session.
Sorry, what formality?
I think we just need to roll call.
Oh, I was gonna, I thought we had to get out of this and re-enter Zoom, and then I would do the formalities. Am I, read the?
It's the same zoom.
This is the primary link.
Oh, says stay in? Okay, I, hang on, let me find my, my guide here. I put it aside here somewhere. Now I can't find it.
It's a different link for?
Yeah, for, for closed session, it's a different link.
Yes, we have to start in a session.
For the council meetings and the study sessions.
It's the same link?
Same link for the council meetings and the?
Okay, we'll give everybody.
And the budget.
Okay, we'll give everybody a minute to not in closed session to get off. And then we'll go into closed session.
So Al, Al, it's a different.
Al, you need to start in open session before you move to closed session. So you're now in open session.
Great, okay. Thank you very much. I got confused here. We're now in open session, and I'm trying to find my, my guide here. What did I do with it? Here it is, okay. We are now calling to order the closed session. We will conduct today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom. Council members and staff are participating from remote locations to practice appropriate social distancing. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting as noted on the agenda. Lisa, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Schwang?
Present.
Cole?
Present.
May?
Present.
Krollick?
Present.
Bryce?
Present. Thank you. This is a, the members of the public may provide public comments on any item on the closed session agenda via the Zoom platform by using the raise hand feature or if calling in my phone by pressing star nine on the telephone keypad. In response, the town will unmute the speaker and allow them to speak for up to three minutes. All members of the public will be limited to one comment per closed session item. I will now open a public comment. Do we have any public comments on any item on closed session?
And no members of the public on the line, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Announcement of a conflict of interest. We will not close public comment. Thank you, Lisa. This portion of the meeting is for council members to disclose any conflict of interest related to any closed session item. Any council member who has confirmed a conflict of interest or a reason to believe they have a conflict of interest should disclose the conflict for the record and abide by the disqualification, disqualification requirements contained in the FPPC regulations. Do we have any conflicts of interest?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from the 118 Baywood item.
Okay, thank you very much, Christine. Do we have any others? Hearing none, we will note that and take that into account when we discuss that item. Public announcement of closed session items. We have four closed session items tonight. I will read them as follows. Number one, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, government code section 54956.9, print D, print, print, one print. Brad Beru, Kathy Beru, Edall versus Towne Hillsborough. And one through 100 inclusive, San Mateo County Superior Court, case number 16CIV02284. Number two, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, pursuant to government code section 54956.9, print D, print, print, one print, Crown Castle NG West LLC versus Towne Hillsborough, San Mateo County Superior Court, case number 18CIV05650. Number three, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, pursuant to government code section 54956.9, print D, print, print, two print, receipt of government claim, see claim form and agenda packet. And four, conference legal counsel, existing litigation, pursuant to government code section 54956.9, print D, print, print, one print, Hillsborough Citizens Alliance versus Towne Hillsborough, San Mateo Superior Court, case number 20 dash CIV dash 04592. With that, we will now adjourn to closed session and leave this Zoom meeting. The city council meeting is scheduled to begin the regular meeting in open session at 6:00 PM through Zoom. So thank you very much. We'll, council members will reconvene in the closed session in a minute. Thank you. All the meeting to order. First of all, good evening and welcome to our May City Council meeting. I do want to apologize for the delay in the meeting time. We had a number of items in closed session, and it took longer than we thought. And unfortunately, that did delay us because we had third parties there and we're sensitive to the being on the East Coast and their time. But anyway, welcome, and I'm glad you're all here. The mayor, excuse me, the meeting of the Hillsborough City Council is now called to order. We will be conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom. Council members and staff are participating from remote locations to practice appropriate social distancing. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting as noted on the agenda. Members of the public may provide public comments via the Zoom platform by using the raise hand feature or if calling in by phone by pressing star nine on the telephone keypad. If a member of the public wants to provide public comments on an agenda item or non-agenda item during the general public portion, they shall request to speak by using the raise hand feature on Zoom prior to the close of the public comment parade for agenda items or non-agenda items. In response, the town will unmute the speaker and allow them to speak for up to three minutes. All members of the public will be limited to one comment per agenda item and one comment for non-agenda items. With that, Lisa, may we please have the roll call?
Schwang?
Present.
Cole?
Present.
May?
Here.
Krollick?
Here.
Bryce?
Present. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God. Liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I will now ask my colleagues individually if they have any corrections, additions, deletions to the minutes of April 12, 2021 City Council meeting. Councilmember Schwang, do you have any additions or corrections to the minutes?
None.
Councilmember Cole?
None.
Councilmember May?
No.
Vice Mayor Krollick?
No.
And I do not either. Do we have any public comment on the minutes? And again, if you could raise your hand on the Zoom feature or push star nine. Lisa, let me know if there are any public comments on the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. No raised hands.
Okay. If accordingly, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 12, 2021 City Council meeting?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you very much. Lisa, may I have a roll call vote?
Schwang?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Krollick?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes, thank you.
Proceeding to the proclamation, I just wanted to note for the public that the council will continue with the closed session, item C in particular, at the end of this council meeting. And on top of that, I just wanted to note for the record that council did give direction to staff in closed session, but there was no reportable action otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. The next section is proclamations. And I'm very pleased to announce that importance of the, of mental health. The town has proclaimed May 2021 is Mental Health Month. I've asked Councilmember Dr. Sophie Cole if she could read the proclamation to introduce our guests. So Councilmember Cole?
Thank you, Mayor and, and Council. It is my pleasure to, have the opportunity to announce the May 2021 Mental Health Month as well as welcome to our mental health champions in our communities. Commissioner Jean Perry, she is San Mateo County Mental Health and Substance Abuse Recovery Commissioner. And Clarice Blanchard, Clinical Director of Wellness and Recovery Services, as I missed it. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas all individuals face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, especially during a pandemic. Whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agencies, healthcare provider, organization and community member share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the Town of Hillsborough does hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Mental Health Month and calls upon the community to commit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our residents can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Signed by our mayor, Alvin Royce, on April 23rd, 2021. Thank you. And Commissioner Jean Perry and, and Clinical Director Clarice Blanchard, welcome and thank you for being here. And I would like to invite you to provide a few comments on Mental Health Month.
We'll start.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you for taking a few minutes to bring attention to our community's mental wellness. Mental Health Month is one of the best times of the year to increase awareness and inspire action to reduce stigma against those facing mental health and substance use challenges. Lime green is the national color for mental health and represents how we want to bring a bright light to important, to this important issue that we, that may be hidden or seen negatively. There are a number of Mental Health Month virtual events. And these are an opportunity to share helpful information and to let you know you're not alone. You can find them at samateohelms.org/mhm. Whether you've experienced a change in your wellness with COVID-19 and other events of the past year, or you have a loved one living with mental health or substance abuse challenges, please accept our invitation to join us in sharing your wisdom with the wisdom of your fellow San Mateo County residents during one or more of our Mental Health Month events. Some examples of the three weeks of Mental Health Month events that are yet to come are two different yoga events, an event about spirituality and mental health, growth mindset for teens and young adults, resilience. And there, there's several different events about resilience and some specific to the Black Indigenous people of color communities, some to the African-American community, some to the Asian-American community. Mental Health and Pets, we've partnered with Peninsula Humane Society for that one. There are several film screenings, music and mental health. So the, the list goes on. There are literally almost 50 events total. So finally, so I invite you to attend one of these events. I invite you to wear lime green and, or something else green and talk openly about mental health with others this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm sure did, did Clarice wish to make some comments?
Um, it would be, it's really quite important to me, if you don't mind, to tell you, share with you personally how much Hillsborough means to me. In 1959, we were living in San Francisco, born and raised in San Francisco. And my brother was diagnosed with muscular dystrophy. So my father was able to buy a third of an acre on Crockett Lane and build a one of flat level home there that he could negotiate. My brother could negotiate. And of both of us went to North Hillsborough and he, just a couple of years younger than me, North Hillsborough School and Crocker, Crocker Middle School. And there he met the most wonderful teacher, Ms. Bambi. And she would come over on Saturdays and taught him how to paint. It's something he painted with the, with the paintbrush in his mouth. He didn't have use of his arms. And she came over and was so patient and so. And she came over and was so patient and so warm and loving with him. I wanted to share that. It meant the world to him. He was so proud of what he could achieve. So then we have to go forward a number of years. And my husband and I were living in Hillsborough with our three children. And our third child, our daughter, was diagnosed with ADHD and many learning differences. And the Hillsborough School System stepped up and they provided most wonderful teachers, Ms. Odom, a special ed teacher, Ms. Tiger, speech therapy, occupational therapy, school counseling, special gym classes. All right. I will go forward to my, our daughter graduated from Burlingame, went on up to Community College and then UC Davis, and then went to Argosy University and graduated with a PhD in psychology. And today, she's a psychologist at San Mateo County General Hospital. And she's a remarkable young woman. And you all of Hillsborough made that contribution to her life. It changed the outcome. Her fifth grade teacher, who I wasn't really crazy about, had told me, you know, Ms. Blanchard, she'll never graduate from high school. I always wanted to let him know. But it was the support, the beautiful focus support of this school system for my brother and certainly for our daughter, that let her have the, oh, she's married and has two fabulous grandchildren. Thank you. Thank you for all you do and all you provide and how you do change lives.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you both. Thanks for all your hard work in the community.
Thank you, Clarice. What wonderful words.
But before Clarice goes, I don't know whether she remembers me or not, but we were parents at North together.
Yes.
But more importantly, I was at North and Crocker with, I believe your brother's name was Augie or August.
August Ernest Wegeman.
Yeah, and 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 he was an inspiration to us all.
Oh.
He was one of the best classmates to have. I will always remember him. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Lawrence.
Well, thank you. Thank both you very, very much. This is an important month. And thanks to the efforts of our city manager Anne and our Public Works Director Paul Willis and Vice Mayor Krollick. I'm proud to announce that Town Hall will be lit up in lime green. Commemorate Mental Health Month. So just want to add our thanks for all the work you do and the assistance you provide and all the people you help whose faces you probably never see and stories you may not hear. But they're being helped and we're very grateful for it. There's our city cap, there's a town hall right there.
It's great.
So thank you very much and Clarice and Jean, and I'm sorry for the delay, but thank you.
Oh, no problem. No problem.
You are most welcome. Thank you so much.
Your words meant a lot. Thank you. Thank you for your good work.
With that, we're going to move to the next section, which is presentations. And we're very pleased to have two great presentations, ones that I think where I'm looking forward to particularly. The first one is the Burlingame Annual Library Report, and that will be Bradley McCully, the City Librarian. And I'd like to welcome Bradley to our council meeting. And Bradley will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Royce and Council. Clarice is a personal friend of mine, so I'm not sure how I can follow that one, but but well, I'll give it a shot. And I also know you guys have had a long night, so I'll make this as 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 short and painless as possible. So thank you, everyone. My name is Brad McCully. If you haven't met me, I am the City Librarian for the City of Burlingame and also for two thirds of Hillsborough. You know, as we all know, a year ago today, we were in a very messy place due to the pandemic. But now, a year later, we are preparing for a hopeful reopening at Burlingame, Maine. We currently are down to twenty eight staff members, down from approximately seventy five pre-pandemic, with most of our hourly staff furloughed. Until this past Monday, we were we were maintaining two cohorts of fourteen staff each, two different teams coming into the building, doing all the work that we needed to get done. And that was so that in case anyone tested positive for COVID, the whole shebang was not shut down. We are now fully staffed, not fully staffed, we are we are out of our cohorts, getting ready for our opening. But over the last year, our library staff have done an extraordinary job of replicating almost every service that we provided pre-pandemic, except for things like, you know, meeting space or browsing our stacks. Other than that, we have really, really worked hard to come up with a workaround to provide those same types of services. So next slide, please. So as I said in the beginning, it was messy. It was confusing. Staff were sent home on March 17. And, you know, it took a week or a week and a half before things really started to sink in. And before we realized that this was not going to be a quick ordeal. But eventually, staff, staff got it together. We immediately started putting everything online. Luckily, libraries in general had already, we already have a lot of resources available online, eBooks, genealogical research, you name it, you know, we have a lot of resources online for the public. But when this all hit, we 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 immediately turned and said, all right, what else can we put online? We, you know, we we went our made our events switch to Zoom. We started issuing library cards by Zoom. We met with our children's department, started contacting Burlingame Schools, Crocker, the Hillsborough Schools. And we started meeting with their librarians, their teachers, to find out which kids needed library cards. Luckily, not that many did need library cards because our children's department had been proactive and were were had already provided a lot. So we didn't have to do a lot in that area. We did move a lot of our our physical book budget at that time to our eBook budget because factories and our book purveyors were not able to provide physical books pretty much all the way through until the end of the fiscal year for 2020. And so we put all that money into our eBooks because that's what people were were able to use at that time. This was, this was just a little bit before we switched to curbside service. So we increased our budget for our canopy streaming streaming movies service so that people had stuff to watch if they didn't already have Netflix, if they didn't already have HBO, things like that. We also extended our Wi-Fi in our parking lot for people that might not have Wi-Fi at home, so they could drive up and use our Wi-Fi in the safety of their car and have the ability, you know, do work or whatever they do to do. So next slide, please. Thank you. And then sometime around May, we got our curbside pickup plan implemented. We were one of the first in the counties to start curbside pickup. Year to date, we have fulfilled over seventeen thousand appointments. That's a lot of books to find and bag up and get out there for appointments. Just to give you a little bit of of comparison, pre-pandemic, we would probably fill close to two hundred holds a day. On most days during the during the last year, we were filling nine hundred holds a day. And this is all done by staff without our without our assist without assistance. So I was out there, my my eighty-three-year-old admin assistant was out there gathering books, our custodian was helping out with curbside service. So we had all hands on deck. And so, you know, another, another, another good way to compare to compare this or another comparison would be so pre-pandemic, you know, we were open roughly fifty-four hours a week. With our with our reduced hours, hour per hour, we are doing the same sort of circulation as we were pre-pandemic. And that's with our staff doing all the work behind the scenes. So it's been a long haul. Curbside service has been a great service, but it's been a lot of work for my staff behind the scenes. So next slide, please. So beyond some of our normal services, you know, online events, things like that, we have, in the last year, we have gotten rid of all late fees overdue fines. So as of July 1, there are no such thing as an overdue fine at the Burlingame Public Library. If someone doesn't turn return an item after, I forget what it is, it's probably six weeks, seven weeks, something like that. There is a a replacement charge that goes on their account. But once they return that item, that that replacement charge is is taken off. So there's no harm, no foul. Over the last year, we have held hundreds of adult, teens, and kids events with over fifteen thousand attendees. So that's a that's a slight increase in what our normal attendee numbers look like, most likely because Zoom is a very easy platform to log on to and people can do it from the comfort of their home. We have answered over four thousand phone calls. We have continuously checked out two dozen hotspots for people that don't have Wi-Fi. We printed over three hundred face shield, three three D printed, sorry, three D printed over three hundred face shields for our local fire departments and for the county health department. Curbside print on demand was a service that we offered so that people could could send us requests to print things and we would print it, bring it out to curbside. We loaned over seventy-eight thousand eBooks in just 2020 alone. And most recently, we called twelve thousand Burlingame and Hillsborough seniors that were over the age of seventy-five to check in on them and find out if they needed any help with vaccination appointments or things like that. So so we've really reached out to the community as much as we can. Next slide, please. So this is just a quick timeline of what I've been talking about, you know, our lockdown back in March. We pivoted in April to get everything as virtual as possible. And then in May, we started our curbside pickup and created cohorts of two teams. June 15 is our library opening, and that's right around the corner. We're very excited about that. And hopefully, we will be back at full capacity sometime starting in in late fall or early winter. All things staying positive. Next slide, please. So here's a quick draft of our reopening plan. And if anybody is interested in a more detailed plan, I'm happy to talk about that some other time or send you what we have. But June 15 is our reopening day. These are our hours right now. These are tentative hours, Monday through Friday, 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday, 12:00 to 4:00. These will all be updated progressively as we move along. So probably after a month or so, we will add more hours and we'll keep doing that throughout the next three or four months until we hit full capacity. We will limit it to one hundred customers at a time. Most libraries have have not hit their full capacity. And I believe that's true for San Mateo and for any other libraries in San Mateo County. We will be limiting the the time in visits to one hour. It's not going to be a hard fast rule, but we're going to try to keep people on track. And when we do open, the whole building will be open. We're not going to do a a a reduced building reopening. Everything will be available. The only thing is you just won't be able to sit down and read books and read the newspapers like you used to. We want to ask people to come in, find their stuff, browse the stacks if they need to, and then leave when they can. So next slide, please. And so the Easton Branch, I know, is a very popular branch with a lot of Hillsborough residents, as it is with Burlingame and and in particular, our current mayor, Mayor O'Brien. And so we want to get it open, hopefully, a month after the main. We're shooting for somewhere around July 15. We may have some staffing issues, but we're working on that right now. And so hopefully, we can get that open not too long after the main, getting it ready for the summertime, when a lot of kids are out of school and they want to stop in and grab books and 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 get things going for summer reading. So more on that in the future or in soon. Next slide, please. And then lastly, I'd like to introduce two of our newest trustees, Hillsborough residents and Library Board of Trustees, Elizabeth Ostrow and Daniela Garcia. I believe they are joining us tonight, but I'm not a hundred percent positive. We are so happy to have them as board members right now. They have been great representatives of the Town of Hillsborough and are doing a lot of great work with us. So we are happy to have them on our board. And that's it. I thank you all for, ah, there's Elizabeth. Hello, Elizabeth.
Here. I'll just say a quick word, which is, you know, I'm relatively new to the Library Board, although I'm not new to the library. I'm a long-term library lover. And I've learned an enormous amount over the short time that I've been on the board. But the biggest thing that I've learned is the extraordinary commitment of Brad and his staff to making the library as wonderful as it is. And even during this extraordinarily challenging time, they have approached their work with so much diligence and creativity and sensitivity and just made the library continue to be the resource for our community that it has always been. So I'm grateful to have an opportunity to support their work on the Board of Trustees and look forward to continuing to do so as we start to open. And thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Well, thank you, Brad, for that great presentation and Elizabeth and Danielle for your service to the board. I know it takes time and effort, and we are very pleased on behalf of Hillsborough that you're there. So thank you very much. I'll be honest with you, Bradley, I'm still stuck on that nine hundred a day. That's incredible.
Yeah.
Kudos to your staff. That is great.
My work.
Before I ask the council members for any comments, I did want to recount the fact that a few weeks ago, I was reading the local paper. And I noticed a letter to the editor that was responding to an editorial about the libraries, library service, local library service. And editorial apparently had said that you had provided very good service during the pandemic, and the writer took exception to that. He thought it was not very good service. It was outstanding service. Editorial, I totally underestimated and understated the job that you all did. And I couldn't agree more. I think it's really been a shining light during the pandemic. So thank you and thank your staff for everything you've done. It means a lot to all of us who are who are book readers, even if even if they're online. I like a hard copy, but I'll do online.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that, I'm going to ask my colleagues individually if they have any comments or questions. Councilmember Cole?
No, I just want to thank Brad for the presentation and for the continued hard work and keeping our libraries in our communities. It's so vital to not only our students, but to everyone in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Schwang?
Nine hundred holes a day. Bradley, kudos to you and your staff. It's amazing. And Hillsborough has two libraries, San Mateo and Burlingame. And certainly, I appreciate your creativity and and the timely support, the Wi-Fi, expanding your Wi-Fi, which was very, very helpful initially for the COVID. You know, shelter in place and kids want to do their homework and things like that. So kudos to you and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Councilmember.
By the way, I want to, I forgot to mention, Councilmember Schwang was not feeling well today, and she's she has come anyway because she is first and foremost a representative of this community. So Marie, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Councilmember May?
Brad, it's what Marie and Sophie have said. Congratulations on a job well done.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Vice Mayor Krollick?
Yes, thank you so much to you and your staff and your board. And and we do appreciate the library and the the vital part that it plays in our community. And also, I just, I love how the building, both the Easton and the main library and your fonts, you sort of span these eras. There's a tribute to our history in the architecture and the font that you use, but clearly you span the 21st century with the technology and the services. So I think you just do a terrific job of pulling all that together, maintaining character, and still delivering these great updated services. So thank you for your dedication.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I will pass it on to our graphic artist. She loves those fonts.
We appreciate them.
Thank you, Brad, very much for being here. Enjoyed your presentation. So if we can be of assistance, please let us know. But thank you for a great job.
Thank you, council. Thank you for your support tonight.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to move to the next presentation. And this is a presentation by a group that is near and dear to our hearts because they do so much for this town and we can never thank them enough. Nor do we fully understand everything they do. I've had the privilege since January representing the council on their board. And I can assure you, if there's ever any doubt, these are people that make a difference. They make an impact and we are so lucky to have them. So Kelly's here. She's the president of the HBF and she's going to give a short, a presentation, then we'll open up for some questions and comments. So Kelly, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Royce and Town Council. And I will fly a bit through this. So please don't hesitate if you have questions or you want clarification at the end. That's what I'm here for. I just really want to thank you for this opportunity to present Hillsborough Beautification Foundation's Year in Review, our annual report to the town and town council. We have many thank yous to share, and I think you'll notice a theme focused on gratitude throughout my presentation. Hillsborough Beautification Foundation has always been fortunate to have had a consistent donor base from our town. And this past year, we saw that base grow, new donors and increased giving. With three months of giving yet to be recorded, we have already surpassed last year's final year-to-date numbers. Our biggest thanks go to our community, all of you and all those who have supported HBF this year for their generosity. And with the support, our projects committee led by Sue Fisher has been very busy. Next slide. This next slide is going to show our New Place Island, the New Place Triangle. This project was spearheaded by Mary Ellie Johnson and Sarah Freitag, completed in early fall. Our town members were able to enjoy it every season this year, from beautiful fall foliage to gorgeous spring blossoms. And the next slide shows Jacqueline and Baileyanna Rhodes. The project managers Letty Callanan and Vicky Loudon worked with Land Tech to make structural and hardscape repairs, as well as install new plantings for a complete beautiful refresh, making it another lovely island respite for residents during neighborhood walks. Next slide shows are some of our daffodil plantings. This year, the project committee planted 1,500 bulbs at nine existing sites. And that's in addition to the more than two decades of bulb plantings that they've provided in Hillsborough. A subcommittee's tracking where the bulbs appeared throughout the sites to plan for next year's plantings already. And the next slide shows our Jerry Lane gates, which that refresh was completed in October. Funds were allocated to correct some existing weed issues, irrigation, mulching issues, in addition to new plantings that were added last spring. And our next slide shows some gorgeous vistas from our open space tour. Mary Kircher chairs a subcommittee that works with town management and recently determined that the Tobin Clark Brook Court Trail may be an open space area of Hillsborough that can be developed into a Parker Trail site. HBF is extremely grateful that town staff and council are looking into funding and contributing staff resources to explore these possibilities around Hillsborough open space areas. The HBF Open Space Committee will continue to work with town on this potential project over the next year. Additional 2021 projects include a new island project at Black Mountain Road and West San Yen Az, an island refresh at Chiltern and Link Roads, some Ralston Corridor work, which we're really excited about. We're working closely with HCSD leadership and the town to begin an initial portion of this project, the lower portion of Ralston at Eucalyptus in advance of the start of HCSD's school site redevelopment. We'll be keeping an eye on a Parrot Drive and Tournament Road HBF site. It's being closely watched for some irrigation issues. And then, as you all know, Eucalyptus Pathway, project manager Eric Niasse completed final design plans for the project, including future replacement tree selections and the new drainage survey. The survey resulted, as you know, in asking the town to provide curb and gutter work. The project is pending as a new extended use agreement is being negotiated between all involved parties. I would especially like to thank you, Mayor Al Royce and the entire town council and city manager Ann Ritzma for prioritizing and working to continue to move this project forward for the benefit and safety of our residents. The next slide as shows our HBF signs, which we are so proud of. And then the next slide goes into some of the newer ones. As many of you know, Gus Benz has continued to install and design new signs throughout town. These are showing our new larger signs for Crossroads Park, new signs for Vista Park and Harvest Garden. Gus and his committee members continue to evaluate islands and projects throughout town for new sign installations. Many thanks to Town Public Works team for installing these signs. And our next slide demonstrates our Harvest Garden, which is just beginning to bloom again. Christine Holtermann took over as Harvest Garden Manager in May of 2020 with Lisa Avalone liaising with the board. After closing due to the COVID pandemic restrictions, Harvest Garden reopened workshops and volunteer operations as allowed by San Mateo County. The Harvest Garden team is focused on new plantings for this growing season based on the preferences of clients at Samaritan House Food Pharmacy. Those include tomatoes, peppers, squash, beans, stone fruits, chaiote and greens. In addition, a new initiative to collect private produce has begun together in partnership with Hillsborough Helping, which allows for fresh homegrown tree fruit and produce donations to be accepted on Tuesdays at the three collection stations within Hillsborough. So we're really hoping that initiative grows and will allow us to donate even more produce. Harvest Garden continues to hold regular Wednesday morning maintenance workshops with interns and our team of adult volunteers. We donated approximately 1,000 pounds of fresh produce to Samaritan House via Grow San Mateo this year. And the Grow San Mateo partnership has been wonderful. The volunteers actually take the fresh produce and package it as if it's coming from a farmer's market. So the clients who are receiving them really see the benefits of this fresh produce and feel like they're, it's coming straight from a garden. We continue to maintain and plant as we enter the summer growing season with the help from the Master Gardener volunteers. And we're making plans for a typical Harvest Garden summer. And that's our hope and goal there. Our next slide. As you all experienced, one of our major challenges this year was how to deliver on our mission of encouraging community engagement and civic pride under COVID restrictions. Our development team under Stephanie Egan became very creative, beginning with this year's Veterans Day on November 11th. This year's virtual Veterans Day ceremony video honored Hillsborough's many dedicated servicemen and women. It included a Zoom pledge of allegiance led by Boy Scouts, a song sung by a Girl Scout troop, an interview with Edward Medzien, a World War II veteran of the 296th Regiment, an address from Mayor Sean Christensen and myself, HBF president. The video included a photo montage of many town veterans and concluded with a lovely rendition of America the Beautiful by Annie Lester. HBF is grateful for the support of Ann Ritzma and William Lee, in particular, for their involvement and support in this important commemoration of all those who serve our country. Our next slide shows our next reimagined event, Light Up the Town, December 3, December 3rd. As you know, Light Up the Town is HBF's annual thank you to the residents of Hillsborough for their generous support. And this year, our chairs invented a very creative drive-through Light Up the Town, began at Decorated Town Hall and moved to two HBF beautified islands at Flora Bunda and New Place, as well as the corner of Ralston and Eucalyptus, where all were wished a good night. There were over 400, maybe 450 cars that enjoyed the event. Over 600 candy canes were given out at the Flora Bunda Log Cabin. Over 600 hot chocolates were given out at North Island's Gingerbread House. The town's Public Works Department lent a hand and the HPD officers helped too. Held trays, served hot chocolate, waved and brought great cheer. Keer Lacrosse of Allegra Events generously sponsored with superb lighting at a discount, which was very much needed for a drive-through celebration. Big thanks to Town Public Works for providing the large containers of hot water for hot chocolate, for setup and cleanup assistance and overall non-stop support to HPD for safety guidance and the hot chocolate serving with a smile. Our next slide, Slide 12. So to reach residents in our town during a year that eliminated in-person gatherings, our communications committee led by Angela Polk took a new approach to HBF communications, sending more and consistent communication throughout the year to all 4,000 residents rather than just donor, past donors, as in past years. In the fall, a postcard featuring our new signs was sent announcing HBF's presence in the community and encouraging all walkers and bikers to notice HBF projects throughout town. This was followed up with a letter sent to all residents and the letter reached to engage readers with a format of have you type questions. For instance, have you seen the work HBF is doing around town? The Board of Trustees and the Development Committee led by Stephanie Egan wrote personal notes on 800 of these letters to donors who had previously made at least one contribution to HBF in the past three years. Stephanie Egan and I also sent welcome letters to more than 120 new residents who had moved into Hillsborough since the beginning of 2020, introducing them to HBF and highlighting several projects HBF has completed throughout town. The Communications Committee designed a postcard to invite all residents, not just donors, to our drive-through Light Up the Town event mailed in November. And in February, the committee designed a postcard celebrating the thousands of daffodils that HBF has planted through the years, bringing HBF visibility to all residents once again. In April, this card you see here on the slide, the Celebrate May postcard was sent to all residents, encouraging them to enter a drawing for Tahitian Pearls donated by Steiners, big thanks to Steiners, or to win our traditional daffodil bulbs. This card is a save the date for Celebrate May 2022, when we look forward to celebrating with the community in person. In addition, the HBF newsletter was just mailed to all residents and will be arriving in your mailboxes this week. Throughout the year, we also used Instagram and Facebook as a way to remind residents of our work. This reimagined approach to communications has had positive results through the beginning of March. And we anticipate more donors after the mailing of the spring newsletter, demonstrating great, strong support for HBF from Hillsborough residents. Throughout the 2020-2021 year, HBF has continued to work beautifying our town and building partnerships to bring our community together, demonstrating our mission of enhancing the beauty of our public landscape, encouraging community engagement and civic pride. HBF is grateful to have incredible working relationships with the town council and town staff. We began the year working with Jay Benton and now work with Al Royce, City Council Representatives to HBF, Ann Ritzma, City Manager, William Lee and Mandy Brown, our Assistant City Managers, Paul Willis, John Iquinto, Carlos Castro, Romulo Flamenco and Daniel Gonzalez and Public Works, and many of the HPD, in particular Celebrate May, asked me to thank Nelson Cordaway. All have been integral to HBF's success this year with their respective areas of expertise. All gave great support to HBF and we sincerely thank you. We truly cannot thank you enough. A heartfelt thank you to Joanne Wall, our administrative assistant for the past 17 years. She retires at the end of June. Her knowledge and insight, flexibility, organizational skills and willingness to help have been incredibly valuable again this year. We are thrilled to announce the hire of Jane Scribner. She will be, longtime Hillsborough resident, will be our new administrative assistant. I would also like to offer thanks to our HBF board members and volunteers on development and projects committees for representing HBF in the community, for all their efforts to ensure Hillsborough Beautification Foundation remains successful and relevant in our town. It has been my honor to serve as president of this hardworking, community-focused organization this year. And I'm delighted to pass the gavel to the new HBF president, Amy Bick, the end of June. Lastly, and with our slide 13, HBF is honored to be part of Hillsborough's virtual Memorial Day celebration. And as we share our video clip or our float, I'd like to thank our community. We are so grateful for the continued support of our neighbors, Hillsborough residents, as well as town council and staff, which allows HBF to be nimble and creative in carrying out our mission. Thank you one and all.
Ellie, thank you so much. We owe you a great debt of gratitude. I'm amazed.
Thank you, William.
Thank you, Kelly. I'm amazed at all the projects and the work that's done by HBF. It's, we cannot state enough the debt of gratitude we owe you. I've said for years that HBF is one of the crown jewels of this town. It's really exemplifies who we are and what we, what we're all about. And I want to thank you and you demonstrate that in your presentation. On a personal note, of all your programs, the one that strikes me most personally is probably your daffodils. And I say that because I reminded yesterday on Mother's Day, because my mother's favorite flower in the world was daffodils. And I only wish she had been able to live out of here because she'd have been in paradise, driving through town and seeing all the daffodils. So thank you very much. I'm going to, I'm going to ask each of the council members if they have any questions or comments. So council member Shwan.
Well, no questions. Kelly, thank you so much for your service and the entire HBF. Our town is beautiful with no small effort by the HBF. And, and it's just seeing those pictures that, you know, in the videos remind us. And I think that at one point, and it, it was like over 120 projects in town, islands, traffic circles. 140.
Yeah, over 140.
It's amazing. And thank you. Thank you so much for making our town so beautiful.
Councilmember Cole, do you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you, Kelly. And I echo what Councilmember Shwan just stated. But on another personal note, I really want to thank you guys for the Harvest Garden and to know that food is going to the food pharmacy is so fantastic. As you may know, I volunteer at the free clinic in San Mateo. And every time you write a prescription for patients to get food from the food pharmacy, it makes such an impact on their diabetes and cardiac conditions and blood pressure. And it's, there's just ample medical evidence that when people can eat fresh foods, we can really make a big difference in controlling diabetes and the other medical conditions. So it's just so incredibly wonderful to hear that comment, see that Harvest Garden. I was just so blown away by that. Thank you for everything you've done.
Yeah. You know, we like to say we're a healthy town and the Harvest Garden is a big part of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember May.
No, other than thank you, Kelly, and thanks for all that HBF does. Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Krollick.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Thank you, Kelly, and thank you to your board. And I think we have some HBF history here. I see Ruth Wisdom, who was a founder. I think Bailey Meyer was very active in the founding. Kitty Mululi was former mayor and I know it was very encouraging. And, and those of us who remember the difference in Hillsborough from before HBF and after HBF, it's just dramatic. I think your first big project were the new street signs. I still think of them as new because they still look new. That was, that, that alone changed town in a really positive way. Before GPS, if you remember, our street signs used to not only be kind of crumpled and hard to read, especially at night, but some of them faced the wrong direction. So you've really made a tremendous difference. I, you can't not smile when you see the daffodils and Light Up the Town is just a great community asset. And, and Lower, all the projects that you mentioned, Kelly, are very exciting. And when it comes to Lower Ralston, I'm sure it's on your radar because you guys have incredible eyes. But that, that fence along Lower Ralston, I hope you give that some love. Thank you again for everything.
Thank you.
HBF gives love to everything in town.
That's the plan. It takes a village. It takes a bunch of us, but it sure has been an honor, as always.
Well, thank you so much. And please extend our congratulations and our thanks to your entire board and your entire membership. It really means a lot to this town to have you there. Thank you.
Will do. Thanks.
By the way, I got to say hi to Ruth because we served on a couple of boards together. So hello, Ruth, how are you? Little point of personal privilege there. Anyway, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. I see there's a hand up in this where the comment can be made. This is a public comment section one. We have two public comment sections at this time and at the end of the meeting. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. As a reminder, members of the public may provide public comments via the Zoom platform by using the raise hand feature or calling in by phone by pressing star nine on the telephone keypad. If a member of the public wants to provide public comment, they should request to speak by using the raise hand feature on Zoom prior to the close of the public comment period. In response, the town will unmute the speaker and allow them to speak for up to three minutes. In response, the town will unmute the speaker and allow them to speak for up to three minutes. If there appears to be a large number of speakers, speaking time may be reduced to no less than two minutes. Members of the public are limited to one comment at this time. State law prohibits the council from discussing or acting on non-agenda items and generally limits the council, bill to the council to respond to any public comments made during the non-agenda items. I do wish to reiterate, we do appreciate and welcome public comments, and they are thought of. And you do raise a lot of good questions that we think about, and if appropriate, will agendize them in future meetings. I will now open public comments. Lisa, I see one hands up. Do we have any? Could you please recognize them?
Sure. Thank you. The screening for the first speaker is Rainbows. I'm going to go ahead and ask to unmute. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Aloha. A proud resident of San Mateo County, appreciate all that you do in keeping everybody safe. The only thing I'd like to say, it's great to see what's going on with the beautification, but I'd really like to put a huge shout out, not only to you, government officials, but also to the fire department. They're still keeping things safe, that y'all are able to appreciate the agriculture. Mahalo. Thanks. Gotta go to the next meeting. Ciao.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And I think that's our longest distance call this year anyway. So thank you. Lisa, any other hands for a public comment?
No other raised hands, Mayor.
Okay. With that, we will close the public comment and move into the business section of the meeting. Before I get, before we get to that, though, I did want to ask if any council members have any conflicts of interest related to any item on the agenda. Any council member who has a conflict, has confirmed a conflict of interest or has reason to believe they may have a conflict of interest, should disclose the conflict for the record and abide by the disqualification requirements contained in the FPP regulations. Is, does any council member have any conflicts on items on the agenda before us tonight? Seeing none, please push raise hand and make sure I don't miss anybody on the screen here. Lisa, are there any hands raised?
No hands raised.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we'll move into the consent calendar. The consent calendar includes routine items which generally do not require discussion. A council member may remove an item for discussion, and any member of the public may request a council member to remove an item for discussion. If not removed, the items are approved in one motion with a roll call vote. The titles of the consent calendar items are as follows. There are so many. We have ten of them tonight. Number one, monthly claims, April one through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Number two, a resolution providing for interim modifications to the Business License Act. Number three, a resolution setting the amount of the special tax for police protection and fire protection and prevention for fiscal year two thousand and one hundred and twenty-two. Number four, a resolution approving an amendment, Amendment One, print-on-print, to the current franchise agreement with Recology to bolster the bulky item and abandoned waste collection program. Number five, a resolution approving a third amended and restated Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement for the South Bayside Waste Management Authority. Number six, resolution establishing memorial and donation policy. Number seven, a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a two-year agreement with Tesco Controls, Inc. for as needed supervisory control and data acquisition SCADA system support services. Number eight, a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to amend an existing agreement with Wood Biological, Inc. for biological consulting services for the town's open space vegetation management program in the amount of forty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Item nine, a resolution accepting is complete the contract with Posse Robles Tank, Inc. for their construction of the Marlboro Tank Number One project in the amount of three hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. Number ten, a resolution accepting is complete the emergency contract with EPS, EPS, excuse me, for the emergency storm drain repair at fourteen seventy-five Tartan Trail Road in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. I will now ask my colleagues individually if there are any items that they would like to remove from the consent calendar. Councilmember Chong.
None.
Councilmember Cole.
None.
Councilmember May.
None.
Vice Mayor Krollick.
Item six, please.
Item six, okay. And I'd like to remove item number four. Are there any public requests to remove an item from the consent calendar? Please, again, push the raise hand feature and we'll recognize you.
No raise hand, Mayor.
Okay, hearing none. We will then entertain a motion to accept items one through ten, with the exceptions of item four and item six. Do.
Removed.
Moved by Councilmember May. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chong, I think. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Let's take a roll call vote on that. Lisa.
Chong.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
May.
Yes.
Krollick.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, if you don't mind, we'll go to item number six first, so I can get my notes here on item four. Vice Mayor Krollick, you had asked for it to be removed?
Yeah, yes. And hopefully, this is, will be very brief. I think it's a great idea to do the memorial donation policy. I just saw a few edits. And, and I apologize to staff for not bringing them up earlier today to give you a heads up. But there's three places in this. It says park. And I think for town, we only need the word town and not park. So on page one of the attachment, which is one forty-nine in our packet, under definitions, the second paragraph, cost, the end of that second line, the expected life cycle of donated park elements, I would just say donated elements. And then on page two, under application, in the first line, the city manager will manage all donations located on town park property, just town property. And then on page three, under monuments, the first line, memorials and upright monuments. It may not be installed at a town park facility. I would recommend just a town facility. And unless anyone has any objections, I would move that this be, this item be accepted as amended.
So moved.
So moved and so seconded. Mandy, would you have any comments on the proposed amendments?
No comments. Thanks for providing that.
Great, okay. Any further discussion on it? Councilmember Chong.
No.
Councilmember Cole.
No.
Councilmember May.
No.
Vice Mayor Krollick.
No.
Okay, and I have none. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, could you take a roll call? By the way, a motion and a second for the item number six as amended.
To adopt the resolution establishing a new memorial and donation policy as amended.
Okay, Lisa, could you please take a roll call on that?
Chong.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
May.
Yes.
Krollick.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. The other item that I'd ask be removed was item number four, a resolution approving an amendment to the current franchising agreement with Recology. And I have no problems with it. I just want to highlight a couple things on it. Because of the popularity of the Recology pickup of bulk items, there, the amendment is designed to allow for a fourth route to pick up bulky items and do so on more than once a year. And this is in direct response to what citizens, not just in Hillsborough, but in the, in the eleven-member agency has asked to happen. The cost is relatively nominal. It's only seventeen thousand to the city, which I think is around four dollars per household. Relatively small, but I think it is, again, very responsive, and I want to applaud Recology for offering and volunteering agreeing to amend the agreement to do that fourth route pickup. So if you see a fourth truck come around, that's what it's for. With that, if, I will move the acceptance of item number four, the resolution approving an amendment to the current franchise agreement with Recology to bolster the bulky item and abandoned waste collection program.
Second.
Okay, with that, to see if you have any questions or comments by council, Councilmember Chong.
No.
Councilmember Cole.
No.
Councilmember May.
No.
Vice Mayor Krollick.
I appreciate that they're bulk, that they are bulking up this service. I think it's appreciated. And I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, you're pointing out that it's only about four dollars per year per household.
Thank you. And I might add that I think you had made the same comment privately. So we both noted on what's the actual cost per household, and it's relatively nominal. Thank you. And I have no comments on it. With that, well, Lisa, could we take a roll call vote? It's been moved and seconded, so please do the roll call.
Chong.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
May.
Yes.
Krollick.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to the section under the category, public hearing. And I believe we have two items of public hearing. Is that right? Anyway. Item number eleven, titled Resolution Setting and Confirming the Fees and Charges for Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-two, and Resolution Authorizing the Water and Sewer Connection Fees effective July one, two thousand and twenty-one. And this will be presented by Assistant Finance Director Rich Santiago. So Rich, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wicks and council. Tonight, we bring forward the Resolution Setting and Confirming Fees and Charges for Fiscal Year two thousand and one hundred and twenty-two, as well as the Resolution Authorizing Water and Sewer Connection Fees effective July first, two thousand and twenty-one. All of these fees are presented on the attached resolutions as well as the staff report. Next slide. For Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-two Master Fee Schedule, there are two new proposed fees, twelve proposed deleted fees, seventy-nine revised fees, which could have an update to the labor rate or staffing positions, staffing hours, and consultant changes. And there are thirty-seven revised fees, which are purely just labor rate updates. Next slide. And the two new proposed fees, both which come from the Planning Department. The first is a pre-application review process fee. And this is a new voluntary review process that an applicant can request in order to get more detailed review prior to the formal submittal application. And the second new fee is an accessory dwelling unit exception fee. This is for the town to cover all costs of any administration design review of an ADU exception. And along with the new fees and changes to existing fees, as mentioned, there are also a handful of deleted fees that are proposed to be removed. They come from the planning and engineering departments. But the majority of these deleted fees still are provided to customers. They've just been revised that they're covered with an already existing fee. The proposed fees are intended to continue to provide full cost recovery for the services rendered by the town. And the fees and charges were proposed earlier today at the budget study session. And they were also proposed, the Master Fee Schedule was also presented and reviewed by the Financial Advisory Committee with a recommendation to approve. Next slide. And then also before council tonight on a separate resolution, as I mentioned, is approving the water and sewer connection fees for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. These are annually adjusted based on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, and that's provided by Public Works. It's a two-point-seven percent increase in connection cost for both water and sewer this upcoming fiscal year compared to the prior year. Normally, these fees do go on resolution with the approval of the sewer service charges. But the sewer rates are currently part of the five-year rate study process, which we will bring forward to council later in July. Next slide. And as stated, all charges and fees shown on the resolutions and are part of the two thousand and twenty-two proposed budget master fee schedule. So staff recommends that we open the public hearing and receive comments, close the public hearing, and then adopt the Resolution Setting and Confirming the Fees and Charges for Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-two, and also adopt the Resolution Authorizing Water and Sewer Connection Fees for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, effective July first, two thousand and twenty-one. And with that, I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Rich. And by the way, I would just note for the public that we did discuss this along with the proposed budget, which will be presented in June at our public study session earlier this afternoon. So council has had the chance to go through these already. But we, we can still have some questions or comments on it. So with that, Councilmember Chong.
I have none. As Mayor says, we have discussed it at the budget study sessions this afternoon.
Councilmember Cole.
I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Councilmember May.
No questions.
Vice Mayor Krollick.
Yeah, I have two questions, please. So thank you to Sarah and Liz and Building and Planning for the putting in this optional pre-application review process. I think that's probably really going to help a lot of applicants. I'm just wondering. And I'm sure it's well-supported by the time that you put in this. If, if you want to try and start this with a lower fee, something under a thousand dollars, to maybe encourage more residents to give it a try and see how it goes. That was my, that was my initial reaction, was just that it's possibly a little high for people in the beginning of their planning stages to take advantage of that, and I think it would be helpful.
Thank you. Sarah, I believe you're on the line. Would you care to comment?
I am, yeah. So we developed the fee based on the average amount of time that we spend with applicants before they submit a formal application and what that cost would look like if it was lumped into one fee. So currently, we are charging people by the hour, which can be tedious for them, laborious for us. Sometimes it's hard to collect the, the fees when we're doing it that way. So I would absolutely be open to a recommendation from council about what that fee might look like. But it is solely cost recovery. The town would not be making any sort of profit on, on that fee.
Right. And I didn't assume that you would be.
Of course, of course. But for the public's, you know, the public's knowledge, it's none of these fees are profit-making. They're all cost recovery.
Christine, did you have other comments or questions?
I did have on the, on one other thing, but, but go ahead, Mr. Mayor, in case you have any comments or questions.
Okay, the, the only comment I had was to reiterate what was just said, is that these fees are designed based on staff analysis on a periodic basis to recover our costs. They're not designed to generate any profit revenue for the town. And historically, they, they have not generated any profit revenue. In fact, they've historically have operated at a, at a loss of slight loss, which is why we periodically review and update. And I do want to commend the review for the deletion of some of the fees and the consolidation. All these fees can get confusing, and the fact that we're trying to consolidate them, we're trying to reduce them and consolidate them, I think is easier to understand for the, for our citizens or homeowners. So with that, I will entertain a motion, and I would also entertain, Christine, if you want to amend the emotion or just let it be taken.
Well, I had actually one other question, and that's on page two oh one. With the sewer fees for business, they seem to go down for every entity except one. They go up significantly, and just wonder what the, what the justification was behind that.
Is it the non-residential sewer rates?
Exactly, the annual service.
You know, I had noted the same thing. I think the Burlingame Country Club in the two school districts are the only ones that increased fairly substantially.
Yeah, and for most of them, it's, again, the sewer rates, they're based on the, the non-residential's three-year average of water winter use. And we take what they actually use during their hours of operation. The Burlingame Country Club, and I verified this with our Public Works Director, Paul Willis, they had some projects going on this past winter. I believe it was a new pro shop and a new accessory building, building. That's what was, they were constructing during the winter.
But by the way, let me amend what I just said. The school district in the Wayva School actually went down.
Yeah, I think it was just the Burlingame Country Club, that one.
Yes, so, I don't want to scare the school district in the Wayva. They went down, so, based on the average. Christine, does that answer your question?
So, so if the, if the Burlingame Country Club had a kind of, so they used more water this past year because they had a special project going on?
That's right.
So they're being billed for this coming year. So they were under billed this past year? Is that the issue?
Well, no, every year, the commercial, it goes by the equivalent dwelling unit, which is initially based on. the equivalent dwelling unit, which is initially based on the rate study. First, it's the residential rate, the 4% increase. And then it depends on what they do during the winter water use, and they take it through your average. So just depending on their actual usage, it can fluctuate based on the initial 4% increase. If they use less water in those times, then their rate will go down. If there is certain like a project like Burlingame Country Club did, then it would it would see an increase. But the the setting for the calculation is based on the residential rate increase, which is first the 4% increase.
So probably this past year, almost every entity because of COVID used less water.
That's right, yeah.
Projects, so they used more water. So so coming up, so is this just a one-year rate for them?
Yes, we adjust this every year. We look at the winter water use every year. Again, it's still taking the last three-year averages, so it doesn't skew it too much depending on what they did the two prior years. But yeah, it is taken to council every year and adjusted for the rates.
Because everybody's, everyone else's went down, and there's one up significantly. So so just to be clear, everyone's being charged on their on the average of the past three years?
That's right, yeah. During the winter water, sorry, during the winter months of water use.
During the winter months.
Yeah, and that's December. It's typically around December, January, and February.
Okay, the average of the past three years.
That's right.
And then next year, we look at the average of the preceding three years again?
That's right, yeah. So then we would get rid of 1920 and then add 2122 as part of that three-year average.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a rolling three-year average designed to mitigate any spike and recapture it through the through the future rates.
Yeah, and and I I think I recall too, in actually 2020, or actually 1920, there was a project going on in the Burlingame Country Club as well. So that's why it was already kind of a high number to begin with as well.
And has have all these entities been notified?
Well, we do once it's approved, yeah. We send them letters.
Oh, not ahead of time?
No.
Are there any other questions? If you could, if council could please raise their hand? Okay. Let's have public comment and see if there's any comments from the public. Lisa, could you let me know if there's any public comments?
No raised hands at this time, Mayor.
Okay, with that, can the entertain a motion to adopt the Resolution Setting and Confirming the Fees and Charges for Fiscal Year 2021 through 2022, and adopt the Resolution Authorizing Water and Sewer Connection Fees Effective July 1, 2021?
So move.
Okay.
Well, second, okay, we have moved and seconded. Lisa, may I have a roll call vote?
Schwang?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Krollick?
You know, I'm going to abstain from this just because of the Burlingame Country Club connection.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And and for the record, Christine, I believe your husband and you are members of the club, which is a reason for.
I am not, just my husband.
Which is a reason for abstaining. Thank you.
Correct.
Okay, with that, let's move to the next item on the agenda, item number 12, titled Resolution Accepting the Vacation of an Unused Portion of Eucalyptus Avenue, Public Right-of-Way and Reserving Two Five-Foot-Wide Public Utility Easements at 290 Eucalyptus Avenue. And that will be presented by Senior Civil Engineer Natalie Grebbs. So Natalie, where are you there?
Hi.
Great.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. Tonight, I'll be presenting on the vacation of an unused portion of Eucalyptus Avenue and the reservation of two five-foot-wide public utility easements. Slide. The proposed vacation is located at 290 Eucalyptus Avenue, which is on Eucalyptus and approximately in between Chateau or Ralston and San Ramondo Road. Slide. Based on, this is a subdivision map, a recorded subdivision map of the area, and based on this map, we know that in 1963, Eucalyptus Avenue was dedicated for and accepted for public use. However, we are unclear exactly why the area circled in red is particularly wide. It's very possible that it was originally intended to be used as a parking bay or even a or was even intended once to be a cul-de-sac, which eventually obviously turned into a through street, which is now Eucalyptus Avenue. Slide. So this is sort of a schematic overview of the proposed vacation and easement reservation. The green shows the existing right-of-way. Slide. The yellow shows the approximately 1,800 square foot of right-of-way proposed to be vacated. Slide. And the orange shows the two five-foot-wide public utility easements proposed to be reserved. Slide. So this is a street view and an aerial aerial view of Eucalyptus Avenue. And probably I should probably point your attention to the right photo. It's easier to visualize. The yellow dash line represents the existing property lines. And you can see in front of 290 and 300 Eucalyptus Avenue, the property lines are set farther back, and the right-of-way is particularly wide compared to the rest of the neighboring properties. Slide. So if the vacation were proposed, I mean, approved tonight, that's this is what the property line would look like, would be more in line of what's more typical of a front property line alignment in Hillsborough. For instance, if Eucalyptus Avenue were to be in this right-of-way area were to be proposed and offered, excuse me, offered as a dedication today, staff would recommend supporting an alignment, something to something similar to this. And then the, sorry, can you go back one? And the, thanks. So the existing, the orange shown now shows the exist an existing five-foot-wide public utility easement along the interior property line of 290 Eucalyptus. And consistent with the Hillsborough Municipal Code, most properties in town are, do you have five-foot-wide utility easements along the interior property line? And this is a requirement in for for subdivided properties in Title 16 of the municipal code. So, slide please. The first public utility easement would essentially be an extension of this existing property or existing easement connecting the easement to the right-of-way. And then slide. There is also an AT&amp;T conduit that exists as shown on by the red line. And this is approximately in the driveway of 290 Eucalyptus Avenue, and it's it's in the right-of-way area proposed to be vacated. So AT&amp;T supports the vacation as long as an easement is reserved to allow them and and other utility companies to use their conduit for access to continue to provide service and and operate their facilities. And slide. So the the second easement would look like this. I think it's shown there, yeah. Slide please. Okay, so what under what authority does the council and the town have to vacate, approve a vacation or reserve these easements? Per the California Streets and Highways Code, the town is authorized to vacate all or part of a public street or public service easement within a town. But the town must also reserve and accept from the vacation any easement necessary to maintain and operate public utilities and facilities. Slide. To summarize, the city engineer and the public works superintendent have determined that this portion of right-of-way is unnecessary for public road purposes. There are no town utilities that exist within this portion of right-of-way, nor would there be likely ever be a need for the town to use this portion of right-of-way as it's so far out of the way, and there's already a consistent distance of right-of-way along Eucalyptus Avenue. Reserving the five-foot-wide public utility easement would allow AT&amp;T and other utility companies access to maintain and operate their facilities as necessary. Slide please. And perhaps, most importantly, vacating this portion of right-of-way would allow the property owners to construct improvements in their front yard, such as a fence or a driveway gate for security and privacy reasons in, but most importantly, in a location that's more consistent with their neighboring properties and not set so far back. And and so they can make more use of their front yard. And yeah, and then because improvements such as a fence or or a gate permitted in the right-of-way are are much more restrictive, and the requirements are much more restrictive and may require a revocable encroachment permit. And then in terms of next steps, merging, well, should should the vacation and the easements be approved, reservation of the easements be approved tonight, the merging the vacated area and recording the easements would be processed administratively through the city engineer and staff through a parcel map recordation. And lastly, this this public hearing item was was notified, posted, and posted and notices were mailed per the consistent with the Streets and Highways Code within 500 feet of the and within 500 feet of the property address. And to this moment, have not received any public comment. And also, I'm so sorry, I forgot to, at the very beginning, introduce the property owners and the design team. We have the property owner, Christian, Kristen Chin here, and as well as the the land saver down down McCloud and the project architect Charlie Burnett. Sorry about that. But that concludes my presentation. Slide.
Great, thank you, Natalie. And I'm sorry. Did you have other comments?
Oh, no, I was just gonna say I'm opening up to questions now.
Okay, great. Thank you, Natalie. Appreciate it. And welcome to our the property owners and their advisors. With that, let's see if the council has any comments or questions on it. Councilmember Schwang?
Thank you, Natalie. My question is regarding the easement. And you mentioned that the property owners was interested in doing landscape. Is is the landscape intended to be permanent, or do does the town and the AT&amp;T have assets at all times to be able to enter and maintain the ease? The especially for AT&amp;T, the infrastructures?
So as of today, nothing, I want to clarify actually, that no improvements have been approved or have undergone review by the by the building or planning department yet. This is not approving any infrastructure or anything like that. It just this, the right-of-way abandonment would allow the property owners to construct a fence or a gate consistent with the the code along their front property line. Similar to how there are other easements in town on other properties along interior property lines, enclosed and gates, utility companies do, AT&amp;T and any other utility company that has a facility there would have the right to access and enter the property to get to their easement.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cole?
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember May?
No questions.
Vice Mayor Krollick?
No questions.
And and I know have I have no questions either. But before we actually take public comment, would would any of the homeowners of the revisions, Kristen or Dan, or I think it's the Charles Barnett Association, have any comments? None are needed right now, but. Okay, thank you. I just want to thank you for attending for this. I will now open public comment. Do we have any public comments on this? Again, by pushing the raise hand feature or pushing star nine. Lisa, do we have any public comments?
No raised hands at this time, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Okay, with that, let's, may I have a motion to adopt the Resolution Setting and continuing confirming the fees and charges for fiscal, excuse me, I got the wrong one here. Sorry, where's my reading? They have a motion to adopt the resolution vacating an unused portion of Eucalyptus Avenue, a public right-of-way, and reserving two five-foot-wide public utility easements at 2090 Eucalyptus Avenue, excuse me.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Cole and second by Councilmember Schwang. Lisa, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Schwang?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Krollick?
Yes.
Royce?
Yes. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's move on to new business. We have two items under new business. The first one is item number.
Royce, before we proceed, and I apologize for asking this question, I might have dismissed it. For item 11, I just wanted to confirm that the council did adopt the two resolutions.
Item 11, flip back here.
You do have that confirmed. I just asked the city clerk, make sure it's good for the record, that's all.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Yes, both resolutions were a part of the motion.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks for, thanks for asking, Chris, for better be safe than sorry here.
My notes weren't the best, so I just wanted to confirm.
Okay, I under new business, item number 13, a resolution appointing a member to the administrative hearing panel. And I believe that's going to be presented by Police Lieutenant Bob Schenka. Yes, there you are. Thank you.
The administrative hearing panel reviews complaints received by code enforcement and the building and planning department. It issues decisions and orders outlining timeframes for the completion of projects. And here's appeals of penalties for delayed completion. It enforces municipal, state, and federal regulations to protect the public while supporting property rights of both public and property of property owners. The panel is made up of five members for a three-year term and meets as needed. And as a decision-making body, the panel is subject to the Brown Act. There is a current unfilled vacancy on the panel for a term ending December 31 of 2021. On January 28, 2021, the town posted a notice of vacancy on the town's website, bulletin boards, and the announcements. Staff received applications from two Hillsborough residents who were interviewed by Panel Chair Catherine Lee, Code Enforcement Officer Linda Stevens, Assistant City Attorney Mark Kudak, and myself. Based on submitted application materials and interviews, staff recommends the city council consider the appointment of Mr. Robert Walker to the panel. If appointed, Mr. Walker will be able to request reappointment for an additional term pursuant to committees and boards policy for 12. Mr. Walker is present and available for questions. I recommend that the resolution appointing Mr. Robert Walker to the administrative hearing panel for the term ending December 31, 2021 be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob, and thank you for that important information about the administrative hearing panel. I think a lot of our citizens are not fully aware of it, so I appreciate you giving the background. Appreciate it. With that, let's go through our council members, see if any questions or comments. And also, let me welcome Mr. Walker to our to our city council meeting. Councilmember Schwang?
No.
Councilmember Cole?
No comments. Thanks.
Councilmember May?
I'd just like to say, Bob, it's good to see you again. It's been many years. I'm glad you're choosing to become involved again with the town, so.
Thank you, Larry. And I really appreciate all of the many, many years you've spent on supporting the town and making it a wonderful place. I'm happy to help.
Vice Mayor Krollick?
Just thank you, Lieutenant Rob, for the introduction, and thank you, Mr. Walker, for being willing to serve.
You're most welcome.
My pleasure.
And I would only add, Mr. Walker, I have your resume is attached to the packet. And it's it never ceases to amaze me the skills and experiences that our citizens in town have, and the fact that they volunteer that skilled and experienced to our committees. And you're a prime example of that. So I appreciate very much, and I would echo the comment just made. Thank you for doing this. It's.
You're welcome.
And appreciate it. So with that, let's open public comment. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Yeah, I don't see any raised hands on this item.
And with that, we'll close public comment. And with that, we'll close public comment. And may I have a motion to adopt the resolution appointing Robert Walker to the administrative hearing panel for a term.
So moved.
Okay, moved by councilmember May, seconded by councilmember Chuan. Lisa, can I have a real call vote, please?
Chuan?
Resounding yes.
Cole?
Resounding yes.
May?
Yep, I do.
Krollick? Enthusiastic, yes.
Right.
Echo that yes as well. So welcome, this, the motion carries. Welcome, Mr. Walker, to the administrative hearing panel.
Thank you so much.
The next item on new business is item number 14, title Resolution Establishing a Flag Flying Proclamation and Public Awareness Campaign Policy, which will be presented by senior manager analyst Mandy Brown. So Mandy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor and councilmembers. A little bit of a mouthful on this one, so bear with me. So just introducing the policy and the background for it, it's really just formalizing the town's position and, and policies that have, have informally been in place for three major topics. Flag flying, issuing proclamations and public awareness campaigns. So we go to the next slide. And just clarifying that these are an expression of the town's official sentiments as authorized through council or mayor resolution or approval. Next slide. So each of these categories really has three sections in the staff report. And so I'll just give a high level summary of the policy itself, the eligibility and then the procedure for each of these. So for the flag flying, this would be at the discretion of the city council. Displaying commemorative flags in accordance with the criteria specified in the policy in order to issue the flag flying councilway by resolution direct staff. And then there are some additional requirements or practices for flag flying that are outlined in the staff report itself, but displayed for up to 30 continuous days and no more than once per calendar year, just some sort of housekeeping items. And then procedures, an example of these is where the, the order of the flag, the size of the flags, and that's all outlined in there as well. Go to the next slide. These are sort of some limitations on commemorative flag, political parties, political organizations, religious, and these sort of outlined here. And if you have any questions on the legal issues of it, I will happily volunteer Christopher to go into any more specific detail. He was super helpful on supporting this. I go to the next slide. So for the proclamation, it's been the general practice of the town and other jurisdictions that's at the discretion of the mayor. We, the policy does outline that proclamations that fall within specific categories are approved by the city clerk or may be referred to the mayor at this discretion of the city clerk, just for ease of administration. And so those categories are listed here, extraordinary achievement, charitable fundraising, local or public awareness campaigns, typically what's has been the norm in the past. And then requests for proclamations being made by the mayor or any member of the city council or resident or a member of a local organization. The next slide. Last chunk is the public awareness campaigns. So, but going back where this is the policy to authorize participation in a public awareness campaign at the discretion of the full council in accordance with the criteria specified. And this, the sort of definition of a public awareness campaign, we'd sort of provided some outlines of what that entails. Posting event dates and information on the town calendar on the city, the town website. Language or artwork in our town communications. So the e-newsletter or e-announcement that goes out or the quarterly newsletter or any other sort of flyers or postings. And again, the procedure requests for the public awareness campaign, very similar to the proclamations. So if you have any questions, let me know and legal questions, Christopher.
Happy to answer any legal questions that the council asks.
Thank you, Mandy. Let's ask the council members, do they have any questions or comments? Councilmember Chuan?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Mandy, for your presentation and I, I think that, you know, clarity on all these policies are always a good one. My question to you is that there is, in the language, requests must be made six weeks in advance of the date of the proclamation is needed. And I was just wondering, how, 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 how was it arrived to six weeks?
Six weeks was something that we had seen other jurisdiction. I guess was part of the process and crafting this policy was used in what had been, has been the practice in the past, what other jurisdictions typically do. And then of course, the legal boundaries of everything and what could be realistic for the town. So six weeks was something that I had seen in various other jurisdictions and just thought it could be on the safe side. Although if that is not something that this council thinks is, is a timeline where you could adjust that.
No, I, I just think that, you know, in general, that's a good practice, but I was just curious as to what, how, how, how did six weeks come about the length of time? And, and is it then at the discretion of the mayor or, and, or the council regarding the requests or from the citizens?
And you're talking about for.
About.
Proclamations.
Yeah, about the six weeks. Is it, are there rooms for flexibility? Not that, not that it was going to be the case, but I'm just saying that, you know, if, if the six weeks is the best practices from other jurisdictions, will there be considerations for the flexibility?
If that's, sorry, go ahead, Nancy.
So it does allow for, except in limited circumstances. A lot of times because council meeting per month, just to get in the cycle, if it's going to be something that the council's going to look at or to get into our newsletter schedule, which you know, being part of the CCAC, six weeks is, is not a lot of time when we're going to an actual printer to put out a paper newsletter to the community. So there, there is language in the proposed policy that would allow for, except in limited circumstances where we could squeeze it in.
I see. Thank you. Thank you so much for the additional information. I think that makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Cole?
I don't have any questions.
Councilmember May?
Mandy, thank you for the good presentation. I don't have any questions.
Vice Mayor Krollick?
Thank you, Mandy. And, and my thought was the same as Marie's that you probably will fair amount get requests for exceptions, but it looks good.
And ironically enough, that was the only question I had on, on all three of these areas, public awareness, proclamations or flag flying. And I also understand that if in fact, this new policy, formalization of a policy has a problem, we can always bring it back to the council for amendment, but I do appreciate the flexibility provided in it. With that, let's open it for a public comment. Again, please, of course, raise the flag on your chat box or push star nine. Do we have any public comments? Lisa?
No raised hands, mayor.
Okay. With that, I will not close public comment. And may I have a motion to adopt the resolution establishing a new flag flying proclamation and public awareness campaign policy?
So moved.
And there are second.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Krollick, seconded by Councilmember Cole. Lisa, could you have a real call vote, please?
Chuan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Krollick?
Yes.
Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Let's go to item number 15. And this is the introduction of ordinance amending chapter one point, yeah, 1.28, friend claims against the town friend relating to electronic service of claims. And this will be presented by city attorney Christopher Diaz.
Thank you, Mary Royce. I think we have a presentation coming up.
Okay.
Perfect. So Mayor Royce, Honorable City Council, Christopher Diaz, your city attorney here tonight to present agenda item 15, which is an ordinance amending the municipal code, chapter 1.28, relating to the filing of electronic claims. Next slide, please. Thank you. So just an overview of what we'll talk about this evening. I do want to talk a little bit about just the, the tort claims act itself, so that the council has a knowledge base about the act itself as well as the public. I do want to talk about the change in the law, which was Senate Bill 1473. It was signed into law last year, became effective January 1st of this year. And so it is, what, what is essentially prompting us to update our municipal code tonight? And then finally, we'll talk about the actual language changes in the ordinance that's before you and what that means once it's built into the municipal code. Next slide, please. So just covering the government claims act itself, I'm still calling it the government tort claims act, but I will tell you the word tort is no longer in the act. It's just the government claims act, but it is embodied within the California government code, so it is in statute. It starts at section 810 and goes on to many, many preceding sections after that. But basically what it does is it provides a process and basically details the specific information that a party would need to provide to a public agency. And it details the procedures that a party who wants to bring a challenge to a public agency needs to meet in order to bring a legal challenge. Next slide, please. So the big takeaway with the government claims act is that if any outside individual wanted to seek money or damages from a public agency, which would include the town, they must file a claim as a first step in the process. Now, it's not required for every type of lawsuit, but if money or damages are involved, a claim is a first step and it is required by statute. Keep in mind that if there was an outside individual that, or outside group that wanted to sue the town and let's say a, a claim was a required first step and they did fail to do so, that would give the town leverage in any lawsuit that is filed to basically ask the judge to dismiss that case either through a demur or other action, basically laying out that they've missed a required procedural step in the process. Now with the claim itself and what that actually means, we'll talk about what the substance is of a claim document and what is required to be provided by a claimant to the town. But we normally ask for claimants to use our form. Our form does detail all of the requirements that are set out by statute and it asks for the information that we will need to do our due diligence to basically consider the claim. So next slide, please. Now, looking exactly at what the claims act requires in a claim document. Excuse me, and I should add that our form has all of this information. But what's required and what would need to be submitted by a claimant seeking to, to bring a challenge to a public agency is they need to detail their name and address, the date placed and other circumstances that led to the claim, a general description of the basis of the claim. So give us a little bit more information so that the town understands what transpired and what occurred. In addition to that, we do ask and the statute does require if there is a specific public employee or employees that were involved in the ultimate issue that led to the claim, that we'd ask that they be identified in the claim document. So again, that the town or any public agency can do their due diligence and find out what exactly transpired. In addition to that, if the claim amount is less than 10,000 that they are seeking, they are required to include the very specific amount in the claim form. Now, keep in mind, the statute also says that if they're asking for more than $10,000, that there's no amount, no amount needs to be listed, but they should indicate, you know, generally it is in excess of $10,000. Now, as a city attorney that looks at claim documents, it's always better for, for individuals to provide more information. And so listing the amount that may be in dispute is helpful knowledge for the public agency that's seeking to do their due diligence. Next slide, please. Now, I wanted to talk just briefly about timing, because this is always something that I think I get lots of questions about, whether it be from the public, staff. But generally, when a, a claim, it needs to be submitted to a public agency within six months of the action that is leading to the claim or potential lawsuit. The statute also indicates for certain types of claims and it's a narrower group, you could go as long as a year. But so I would take, this is the big takeaway. If you are a claimant seeking to bring a challenge against a public agency, you'd want to be mindful of these dates, because if you miss these dates, your, your potential to bring a legal challenge is kind of out the window at that point. Now, if we do receive a claim within the required time window, what is the town's obligation? Well, the statute indicates that we should act on that claim within 45 days, which would be to either accept it and pay it out or reject the claim, because we don't think there's a legal obligation for the town to basically pay that amount. Now, keep in mind that even after the 45 days, we can still formally reject a claim. And there is a legal benefit that we get in the government tort claims act if we formally reject a claim, whether it be within that 45 day window or even after. But the legal benefit is this, if we do formally reject a claim, again, does not matter on the timeframe. But if we formally reject a claim, it shortens the statute of limitations for a potential claimant to file a suit against the town. So if we formally reject, they have a six month essentially statute of limitations period to bring a lawsuit. If we do not formally reject, that means they have a two year statute of limitations. So we work closely with Plan JPA, who's our risk insurance provider to essentially reject claims that we think are worthy of rejection. It may not always happen within that 45 day window, but it does happen so that we can get that, the benefit of that shorter statute of limitations. Next slide, please. Now going on to the change in the law that occurred last year and became effective beginning of this year, Senate Bill 1473, and I will suspect that this bill did get spurred by the pandemic and kind of everyone working remotely. But what this law does is it basically acknowledges that if a city or any other public agency wants to accept claims by electronic submission, they are allowed to do so, so long as they adopt either an ordinance that allows for that or a resolution. Now, keep in mind, a lot of public agencies that we work with have been allowing for electronic submission even before Senate Bill 1473. And so what this law does is it brings a lot of the public agencies current with the law, or at least allows for it clearly now within the law that we can do this. And it lays out a basic procedure as to what's required. And so really, in a lot of ways, this is bringing us current with current practice. Next slide, please. Now, the ordinance itself, it does amend chapter 1.28. We do have a detailed chapter just on the submission of government claims. And so it adds some language to one of the sections in that chapter, and it does four things. The first thing it does is it does ask that an individual who is submitting a claim to use our online claim form. That ensures that there's no guessing as to whether we're actually receiving a document that meets, meets the substantive requirements of a claim. If the form is filled out and we do receive it, we will treat it as a claim and process it accordingly. But it does ask that if somebody is going to submit a claim to please use our claim form. In addition to that, it lays out the option for our city manager to adopt additional instructions on submission of electronic claims if it is needed. We've obviously, obviously built some language into the ordinance in our municipal code, but there may be confusion or questions that develops. And so if that was to occur, we'd look for our city manager to potentially work on some additional instructions that would essentially just go somewhere on our website, but not be a part of the municipal code. In addition to that, it also indicates that proof of electronic service may be made and electronic documents can be signed consistent with government code section 915.2. This is one of the main sections that was amended by the Senate bill. And what it basically acknowledges that is that either proof of electronic service is done consistent with the way the court system works or electronic submission allows for email and it allows for other types of format, so long as it's electronically transmitted to the public agency. Finally, what we've added in is some language that if somebody out there does submit a claim to us electronically, that they consent across the board to electronic service of notice and electronic, basically communication for the most part. And that we obviously have discretion to go a little bit outside the bounds of that, but for, for the most part, if they do submit electronically, we will treat and work with them electronically as well. Next slide, please. So with that, staff's recommendation is to introduce and read, reading beyond the title of ordinance amending chapter 1.28 of the Hillsborough Municipal Code relating to the filing of electronic claims. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the city council may have, as well as just a reminder to the council, this is a public or not a public hearing, but we will want to take some public comment on this item as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Let's see if any of the council members have any questions or comments. Councilmember Chuan?
No, no, this point.
Councilmember Cole?
No questions at this point.
Councilmember May?
No, thanks, Christopher. No questions.
Vice Mayor Krollick?
No, thank you, Christopher.
This, I had no problems with the. This, I had no problems with the proposal. I do have a question with what happens to these claims? Who do they, uh, is there a de minimis rule in which they're decided by the town? Do they go to council? What happens when a claim is filed?
That's a great question, Mayor Royson. I I'm sure our city manager will have some more to add to this. But when we receive a claim document, we do look at it. We do wo- work with our Plan JPA, our risk insurance provider, to take a look at it as well. I believe, and Anne could correct me if I'm wrong, but she does have some financial authority to settle claims if she so desired, that the council has essentially granted to her by prior action. But she can always take a claim directly to the council, and if it exceeds that financial authority, it would come to you for discussion in closed session.
Thank you. I I know we have granted discretion to departmental heads to accept proposals or bids on their own without actually having to come to the council. And I would support having the same thing applied to the city manager's office. So I'm glad to see there that that exists. Anne, did you have any comments on that or?
Actually, that was a good summary. I do have the authority to to settle claims. I work very closely with Plan JPA on on claims that are submitted. Our city clerk does the tracking of any of the claims that are submitted, so that there is a good public record. Many times, our our Plan JPA will recommend that the town handle a claim internally, as long as the paperwork and the paperwork trail is there. And many times, the Plan JPA will handle it through their third-party administrators and then that report comes back to the council for approval of the claim with their recommendation.
Great, thank you. Are there other questions of council? Did I see a hand raised? Oh, yes, I did not. So let's go to the public and see if there's any public comments. Lisa, could you please let me know if there's any hands raised or star nines indication?
Uh, no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, I will now close public comment. And and I will, uh, may I have a motion to introduce and waive the further reading of the ordinance entitled Ordinance of the City Council, the Town of Hillsborough, Amending Chapter one point two eight of the Hillsborough Muni Code relating to the filing of electronic claims.
So move.
We have a move by, uh,
Second.
Cole and a second by Councilmember Wong. Lisa, could you have a real call vote on this, please?
Wong?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Krollick?
Yes.
Royce?
Yes. Motion has been carried, so thank you very much. And Christopher, thank you.
And thank you, Mayor Royson, counsel.
Okay, the next category of of topics are discussion points, and we have a couple tonight. The first one is item number sixteen, which is entitled Town of Hillsborough Statement of Values. And this will be presented by city manager Anne Ritz. Before Anne says anything, I'd like to exercise a point of personal privilege and say a couple of comments introducing this topic. This is a topic that is is pretty dear to me, because I think it's important for a town to state publicly what they believe in and what they aspire to believe in and do follow up and act in accordance with those values. It's meant to convey what we stand for and we continually aspire to. In my eight years on the council, very rarely have I not seen these values adhered to, particularly by town and town staff and by residents. I think the bulk of our residents overwhelmingly adhere to these policies. But I think it's important for us to state them, to communicate them and to follow them, particularly in the times that we now live in and with some of these values are under attack. I might also note that I look at these values as the lens by which we examine our policies and our actions. That is, we adopt or move on anything, we sort of look to make sure they're in adherence with their values. And those are the lens in which we justify. So I I am a big strong believer in the concept of shared values. These may or may not be the right ones. That's up for the council in particular to decide. But I do appreciate this being on the agenda. And so with that, Anne, I'd like to turn it over to you. Anne, are you there?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, you have before you a draft of council values and next slide please. Way back in February, the city council met to do their annual goal-setting session and began the discussion about a creation of a value statement for for the coming year. In in, one, to set priorities and two, to make a larger effort toward being transparent as as the mayor spoke. There was a lot of feedback at that discussion during the goal-setting session and we had the cat town's existing mission statement and staff has been working with the mayor. And actually, over the weekend, the mayor did a little additional editing. So the the version that you're going to see tonight is actually a revised version from what was in the the council packet, but this is just a draft. Tonight is actually an opportunity to discuss the draft, review the draft, make any comments and allow staff to go back and take your feedback and update the draft. Next slide please. So the Town of Hillsborough has an existing mission statement and there's no proposal to make a change to that existing statement. The Town of Hillsborough serves the needs of our diverse community by providing for its safety and well-being while promoting a superior quality of life. The mission drives the the why and the value statement actually drives the how. How do we do that? Well, we serve with integrity, embrace diversity and a responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars and the natural environment. Our actions are guided by adherence to our shared values and commitment to our community's well-being. So that's the first step in establishing a value statement and what we're proposing in the draft. Mayor Royce, do you want to stop and kind of talk about each of these? Or do you want to do the the entire presentation and then come back?
Well, that's a good point. Let's stop here. We'll defer we'll defer public comment until the very end. But if councils have any comments on as we go through, I think it's appropriate while it's still fresh in their mind. So, uh, councilmember Wong? Any on the mission statement or value statement?
Uh, no, no, this time.
Councilmember Cole?
Sounds great so far. Looks good.
Councilmember May?
I I'm not sure where this is gonna go and when I raise this issue at our planning session back in February, I specifically indicated I wanted it to be language that we could incorporate in agreements with our contractors and other parties we do business with. And I did that for a reason, because in recent, very recent history, I've had two experiences with our contractors who were engaging in behavior inconsistent with our values. And and I feel a a mere statement of our values is sort of hollow unless we have buy-in from people we we work with on a regular basis. And these were two of our larger contractors. And and one of them was contacted. I'm not sure we had an adequate resolution of the problem. And the second one immediately responded saying they would do something. But the the introductory language indicated to me that or didn't reflect when I raised this and I had buy-in from the other council members, that this was going to be part of our entire, what I call contractual process, our legal process. I wanted it to have teeth, so when our contractors did violate our value system, we had a method of of dealing with them. We could go back to them and say, you promised, so it. The the introductory I found a little bit inconsistent with what I had raised back in February. If if we address it as we go through, that's fine, but I wanted to have that as a part of the discussion, because again, what what these two contractors failed to address and failed to monitor were pretty serious transgressions. And and I felt that if we had some contractual basis or at least some something with teeth in it, we would have had a much better outcome when the problems were brought to their attention. But specifically as to the mission statement and value statement, I have no comments at this time.
If I could make a moment before I ask Vice Mayor Krollick, just a couple of questions. Laurie, I think your point's well taken. And I don't think anything would preclude us from adopting a resolution or ordinance which would require that contractors abide by the same shared values that we do. In fact, I think that's a great idea and a great point. My initial, our initial attempt was to identify what we think those shared values are, that the town abides by, that the town staff abides by, that the council agrees to, and what I hope our residents agree to as well. And as we move forward on all our deliberations and all our interactions, we sort of have a guide as to as to things that we think are important and we want to make sure we follow. I know in private business, when I was at Deloitte and a couple other nonprofits, we adopted a value statement. We actually discussed that value statement with any contractor, any service provider to ensure they were compliant with it. We normally did not put that in the contract, but nothing would preclude us from that. So I think your comments are very well taken personally, and we could certainly do that as a follow-up action or even tonight.
Yeah, I I don't know that it's required tonight. I I just when I saw the the introductory paragraph or the first slide, I thought it was. I noticed that the, what my stated purpose and what I thought the council had given direction on, based off on how I raised the issue, was to have a part of our make sure everyone we deal with subscribes to, uh, understands what our values are and agrees to adhere to them. I'm trying to think of the the most recent incident. May have been after our February meeting. And the 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 problem which was pointed out by a resident of ours certainly is inconsistent with the value statement that we we have today. So I I would want to make sure, maybe it's just the introductory or maybe it's just that we keep it in our mind. I'm not saying to change anything tonight. But I think we need to to make sure that we have people we deal with, make sure they subscribe to our values, because it's it's very important, uh, more so than ever right now. But thanks, I don't, I'm not not disagreeing. I just, I think I needed to put it in context.
Now, I I think your point is very well taken and and I apologize, I did not re- I I now remember very vividly your comments very made, very well made, and I had, I did not necessarily include that here, but I meant it to be applied.
Okay, great, thanks, Al.
Chris, Vice Mayor Krollick?
I I think this is a great exercise and a great draft. I do have notes, but perhaps I could just submit them to you offline and you could consider them before bringing it back.
Great, thank you. And I've already made my comments. So Anne, any comments before we move on to the next section?
Yeah, that was helpful. Let's move on. So the next section is a draft statement of inclusivity. I'm gonna have a hard time with that one, um, that we are an inclusive town. And we wanted to make sure that there was a statement that talked about this town's unwavering adherence to the principles of respecting diversity and ensuring inclusive practices. We turned this statement toward the leadership of our town that we would assure the community as well as town departments that we are welcoming and respectful to everyone. And then we tried to define diversity as ensuring that everyone feels recognized, safe and treated with mutual respect. And then a statement that diversity respects and recognizes the visible and invisible attributes of all people and diversity is supported by communication, which is the vital link that brings employees, customers and members together. We kind of went back and forth about whether or not customers were residents or if we needed to actually add that language. So just a draft.
Okay, I, uh, let's go through the nine characteristics and come back, but I'll. Well, I appreciate your, again, this is a discussion for feedback and advice, so I think we can make a couple. So with that, you want to go through the next slide?
So then we have kind of nine attributes or kind of shared values. Going a little bit deeper, one is civility and courtesy. And this just talks about how we treat one another with respect, with dignity, with courtesy and thoughtfulness in all of our interactions, whether those are written or verbal, that we appreciate the differences of opinion and that we embrace policy disagreements as part of our democratic process. And we respect the opinions of all residents and all our neighbors, whether we agree or disagree with those opinions. The second is integrity and ethics. We wanted to state that we safeguard public and individual trust through open and honest practices and communication, believing that ethical behavior is a fundamental element of Hillsborough's shared values. Stated simply, we're honest and objective in the performance of our duties and decide all matters free from improper influence. And we're guided by principle and conscious conscience and the desire to do the right thing. Third is diversity and inclusiveness. And this this goes back to our inclusivity statement. We recognize and celebrate the diversity of this community. We are committed to treating all with respect and fairness. We actively seek equal access, equal participation and equal treatment for all. And we respect and support all our residents and strive to be fair and inclusive in all aspects of our community. Next slide please. This gets back to some of our our priorities and our, that our council has set. Collaboration and partnerships, we believe in being good neighbors. And if you were part of our our earlier study session, this is a an area that we highlight often. We collaborate with others in the community and the town and other cities. We support the volunteer organizations that provide essential emergency services, beautification projects, community celebrations and events and programs bearing the lives of our residents. We value our neighboring cities and strive to work collaboratively with them for the good of the town and our region. We highlighted innovation and creativity. We wanted to value the artistic richness and support the idealism and creativity of the community. We are dedicated to consistently finding innovative and better solutions to provide the best public service possible. And then under quality of life, which we mentioned in the mission statement, we wanted to emphasize that we maintain a balanced sense of community. And that means that we protect the quality of life, we conserve natural beauty and we proactively govern any of our changes with care and thought. And we view ourselves as stewards of the town's residential character, natural environment, small-town culture and quality of life. Three more. Next slide please. We're environmentally responsible. We make it our responsibility to protect and improve the natural and built environments, pursuing opportunities to pursue and create open and green spaces. As we all know, we value the natural beauty of our town, its hillsides and valleys, historic trees and gardens. We are committed to preserving Hillsborough as a healthy town and we support efforts to ensure clean air, less pollutants, more parks and recreational areas, environmentally sound policies in the governance of our city. responsiveness to the public. We hold ourselves accountable to the members of our community and we are committed to actively seeking public participation. We promote a public process which is open and transparent, whereby we can respond to the community's needs while balancing competing interests and diverse opinions. We engage with community stakeholders to build mutually beneficial, lasting relationships in a prompt, efficient, positive, professional and constructive manner. We hold ourselves accountable to the highest ethical standards in dealing with our residents and others. And finally, part of our mission, public safety, we are committed to protecting the personal safety of our residents and to safeguard the community from the threats of natural, technological or other threats to our safety and well-being. We are committed to preparation, planning and execution of programs to prevent and minimize the effects of disasters. to prevent and minimize the effects of disasters. Those nine attributes.
Any other comments, Anne, or should we open it to public?
We're, we're to the end of the slides and we could open it to, to comments, suggestions, questions?
It's, it's a lot there, and again, this is for feedback and for general discussion. It's not anything that we're going to formally take a vote on tonight, although it is my hope we ultimately adopt this at some future meeting formally. So with that, I would appreciate any comments you have, and we'll start with Councilmember Chong.
Thank you, Anne, and thank you, Mayor, for your thoughtfulness. I, I think that it is worth discussions. Anne, would you mind bringing it back to page five on your presentation? So, so on page five, one of the things regarding the, let's see, what was the part? So I think it's regarding diversities and inclusiveness. And, and the idea that, you know, we want to treat and celebrate the diversity of our community and that we're committed to treat everyone with respect and fairness. I, while I appreciate the concept, I find that the fairness part is very hard to define. It, it really is on the perspectives of where you come from, right? Where, when I say where you come from, your perspectives sort of dictate the fairness part of it. So, so I, rather, I think that, you know, it, it could be delved deeper. And I'm, I'm not trying to wordsmith at this point, but really, to, to recognize the individual, when we talk about diversity, to, to recognize the different culture and respect in terms of celebrate it and embrace it or learning about it. I, I think that that is going to kind of help us lead to a better discussion about fairness. Right, I, I, I'm, I'm a little bit, not, not clear on the, the fairness part. And I think that when it comes to the diversities and inclusion, I, I get what you're saying, but I think that we need to go deeper in terms of what it means, you know, like, without making it too specific to, to make, to have more of actions toward, there's a process that we can, step that we can take to make this not just words but meaningful.
That, those are great comments, and, and the concept of fairness is worth exploring further, I think. And to some extent, it's in the eyes of beholder in terms of different backgrounds. I think what the initial intention was, Marie, which may or may not be right, was the next line in which we seek equal access, equal participation, equal treatment, meaning that we want to be fair with our people in the town. And I guess, how we define that, we need to give some more thought to, so.
Right, I mean, you know, one of the things that we, we have talked about in terms of the equity about the vaccinations, you know, in this county. One of the discussion is about how do you define the diverse, recognize that the differences and how to approach so that we can build trust. You know, and, and people come from different perspectives and, and, and out of good intention, but at the end of the day, and I think that part of, one of the slide talk about, we need to communicate. You know, we need to communicate our values and communicate the attributes so that everyone would be able to understand and share the same kind of values in that sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you have any thoughts on how we define that, Marie, we would appreciate it. You know, to give more thought to this, because again, we need to be sure we're doing what we want to do here, so. Councilmember?
Yeah, thanks, Anne. This is, this is really a great start in terms of the conversation, and, and thank you for a great presentation. I'm just going to add a few thoughts to what's already been said. First, I, I completely agree with Councilmember May about making this contractual value statements that influence, or at least is a key part of who we interact with and what, when they work in our town or they work with us, that they understand these are our values and will hold them to those same values to, to, as part of their relationship with us. And this is at least what we expect everyone in this town to try to abide, abide by after we finalize the wording. With regards to some of the comments that Councilmember Chong just made, I think my understanding of that is, is perhaps the word equity, which is basically defined in the next two or three sentences that followed that fairness. So equity meaning we have consistent standards that are applied equally across the board without bias. It's interesting, when I think of diversity and inclusiveness, I, how do you limit bias out of the discussion? How do you, are you, you treat everyone with fairness and equity? So those are my thoughts on that. It's true, we all come to every situation with our personal biases, but as representatives of all the residents, we want to be consistent in how we apply certain policies and rules and decisions.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that. We may want to suggest, getting back to your comment with, with Marie, the concept of fairness, maybe the word we should substitute is equity. But again, we give some thought to that. Councilmember May?
Thank you. I, I've pretty much expressed what was on my mind, but then I was thinking maybe I should have paid more attention to the, the language. But then I was reminded, and Bob Walker's presence tonight helped me remember. Twenty-two years ago, I attended a college admissions officer meeting at my daughter's high school. And he said what they did not want to see in the college admission essay from the student was something that sounded like a forty-eight-year-old attorney wrote it. And, and I've always taken that to heart, because, you know, I, I have practiced law for forty-five years. And everything I write does sound like an attorney, so I, I'm very willing to defer to Anne and to you and to the council in terms of making this sound like a, a true vision and value statement rather than something an attorney writes. So I'm, I'm quite open to, to changes that are suggested or, or keeping it the same.
Thank you, Larry. Councilmember, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Krolik?
Well, I applaud the city manager for bringing this forward and 100% support the substance. And, and clearly, you know, it's something that's meaningful to all of us based on Marie's and Sophie's comments. And to Larry's point, I was just thinking if we just tweak the semantics a little bit, rather than we treat everyone, which sort of sounds like it only applies to us, council and staff, to change it to, to under-values, to serve with integrity, embrace diversity and be responsible, would just make it a little more in the third person and, and tweak it that way so that it's, it sounds like this, this applies to everyone. A contractor who might be applying to work with us and not just those of us who are actually directly engaged with the town. But again, I 100% support the substance, and I really applaud the city manager for bringing this excellent draft forward. And I understand you worked on the draft too, Mr. Mayor. Well done.
Thank you. Well, my comments are sort of already reflected, my opening comments and then, and then some of these, some of the things you're reading. So I have nothing in addition that, other than, again, I think we want to make sure that we get feedback. This is my intention for not only us to follow it, and I think Larry's suggestion about making sure our suppliers and contractors understand, see and follow this as well is a great one that we may want to incorporate somehow into this going forward. But it's also to sort of set a guideline for not how we, not only how we interact with others, how others interact with us. So it's a two-way street here. And so your comment, Christine, about two rather than we, I think is probably spot on, so. Anyway, Anne, did you have any thoughts or comments? Do you have the right kind of feedback, enough feedback?
This is great feedback and we'll, we'll take another stab at it and bring it back to you again.
Okay, I, I do want to open up the public comment and see if there's any public thoughts on this. So Lisa, if you could please let me know if anybody's raised their hand or pushed star nine.
Thank you, Mayor, no raised hands.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment, no actions required on this. So with that, I want to thank the council for their, for their discussion and, and great comments on this. We'll now go into the next category, which is informational. And item number seventeen is a San Mateo County, county, excuse me, San Mateo County Health Department update on COVID-19. And it will be presented by our city manager, Anne Bismann. So Anne, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and community. This is, we're getting close to the end of probably my updates. As I just recently heard that after June fifteenth, the county will no longer be doing their updates. And we may also find that we have less of a need to do updates as well. So with that in mind, welcome to May tenth's update and next slide. This is the, the county dashboard as of today. And the very, very important number is our RF number, which is well below one, continues to hover somewhere between point eight and point seven. So we are doing quite well in terms of the county. And if you also look at the cases graph at the bottom, you'll, you'll note that we've gotten through several spikes and we are definitely down on the, the far end of transmissions and new cases in, in the community. And fortunately, we do have two new deaths from last week, but we continue to do quite well. Next slide, please. So one of the most important things that the county is still emphasizing is testing and making sure that individuals test, test, test. And the county has the capacity to test in, on every day of the week, anywhere. And you can go on to the county's website and sign up for free testing. This is very, very important for a couple of reasons. One, if there is someone who tests positive, the county can get into that neighborhood or that family or that individual early and, and try to stop transmission. And the second is that we're still getting some credit for the amount of tests that are actually administered in the county in terms of getting us to the next tier and the opening up. Next slide, please. So just in case you need to find a testing site, they are all over the county and they are free and they are very accessible. And you can find the same information on the county's website under testing. Next slide, please. And how is Hillsborough doing and where are we at? That just gives you an idea of where we were in December with 115 cases. As of May seventh, 320 cases. We've had less than 10 cases in the last 30 days. Next slide, please. So where does that put Hillsborough and the rest of San Mateo County in the state's California blueprint for a safer economy? We are just on the verge of the yellow tier. Our case rate is down, our adjusted case rate is 1.7. Our positivity rate is 0.6 and our health equity quartile is 1.1. And we have been there for the last two weeks and we anticipate moving to the yellow tier on May eleventh. That would be tomorrow morning, if all goes well. Next slide. If things do not go well and one of our numbers is, changes, we will stay at the orange tier for another week. at this point, many of our indoor activities are at 25 or 50% capacity and moving to the yellow tier would bring almost all to 50 to 75% capacity. Next slide, please. The other important piece the county is working on are vaccinations. There are clinics available throughout the county as well as appointments at the event center, community clinics that have been set up in lots of different places, churches and schools, as well as the county's outreach program for homebound residents. And as you may have noted this morning, vaccine, the vaccine has also been now approved for age 12 and up. So our county will be moving to work with the schools to open up the event center for youth and youth vaccinations. Next slide, please. These are the vaccine dashboard off of the county site. Our county is moving rapidly along. We did realize just last week that we are seeing the drop that the rest of the United States is seeing in terms of signups. The county ramped up for 3,000 vaccines at the event center last Wednesday, and they got 301 individuals. So please, please, please encourage your friends or family who have not yet gotten their vaccine. The county has plenty and we don't want anything to go to waste. Next slide, please. We do anticipate on June fifteenth that California is going to fully reopen. We currently have enough vaccine in the state and our hospitalization rates continue to remain low and stable. We are being told that common sense health measures will continue after June fifteenth if the rest of the state opens up. And at this point on June fifteenth, we will no longer have county orders. We will follow whatever the state, state order is and the entire state will have the same rules and regulations. Next slide, please. So just a couple of things to hold on to for upcoming dates with the town. I have a coffee with the city manager on Friday, May twelfth, from nine to 10:30 in the morning. If you are interested in meeting our town lobbyist who is working on housing legislation, I invite you to join our coffee.
May, May twenty-first, Anne?
Yes, Friday, twenty-first. We have a virtual Memorial Day celebration coming up and there are lots of people working behind the scenes to put together a wonderful video and slideshow. So stay tuned for the link for that exciting event. If you haven't signed up, Hillsborough Schools Foundation has a virtual fun run. You can complete it anytime on May twenty-second or twenty-third with your friends and family. And there are great t-shirts and swag that go with that. Also, if you've been cleaning out your garage, cleaning out your house, Hillsborough Shred and E-Scrap is coming up at Town Hall on June fifth from nine to 12. Bring your boxes of shreddable paper as well as any e-waste that you might have. Next slide, please. And please join with us in recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. And that's why Town Hall is a bit green these days. Next slide. We did send out notices to the community that we are planning on having a public hearing on Thursday, May twentieth at 5:00 PM regarding the thirteen applications that have been proposed for wireless communication facilities. That meeting is not to consider the applications, but simply an administrative meeting to set up the hearing process and do the scheduling. Next slide, please. And town staff has been busy getting ready to reopen. And next slide, please. We will watch carefully on June fifteenth to see what the guidelines will be in terms of the state of California opening all business activities. We will have our town staff back in their respective seats. We've had folks spread out all over to maintain good social distancing and we hope to have everybody back in their regular desks, get their regular phone. And at that point, we will And at that point, we will open Town Hall in the front door for business on Monday, Monday through Thursday from eight to five and Fridays from eight A M to twelve P M. And once town staff gets settled and we get all our protocols in place, we anticipate opening September first for community use of town facilities. Those are meetings and socials and recreation classes. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ann. As always, a very thorough, informative report. Appreciate it very much. Let's see if there's any questions or comments from the council, Councilmember Schwang.
And now, really appreciate your update and glad to see that we're, we're positioned our county to be in the yellow.
That's great news. Councilmember Cole.
Um, no questions, just want to thank Ann for these very outstanding presentations on COVID updates over the past year or so. It's been quite impressive. You really brought us along, keeping us posted on what's happening. Thank you.
Councilmember May.
Now, what Sophie said, Ann, thanks for all that you've done this past year. It's been great.
Councilor, Vice Mayor Krollick.
I agree. It's great to see the light at the end of the tunnel. And thanks to Ann and staff for navigating all these difficulties this year. And it's also exciting to see Town Hall lit up like that. And I just wonder, are we going to mention why Town Hall is green in the next e-announce?
Ann, I presume we are.
We, we are going to, we are going to let folks know why it's green. It's not the Green Hornet.
I think it'll be a great mystery until it comes out.
And the cool thing, it comes with a remote.
Oh, very cool, very cool.
If Ann gets restless some night, we might just see the colors change.
I would, I would just echo the comments made by my fellow council members. And I would only additionally note and kudos to you and the forum and your staff for the communications that have been occurring and I know will continue to occur. They've been exemplary and really appreciate all the different ways and the content of the communications. So thank you very much for that as well. So.
I, I had a phenomenal group of people that I work with. We're a great team. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we're going to move to public comment item number two. And as a reminder, members of the public may provide public comments via the Zoom platform by using the raise hand feature or if by calling in my phone by pressing star nine on the telephone keypad. If a member of the public wants to provide public comment, they shall request to speak by using the raise hand feature prior to the close of the public comment period. And response of town will unmute the speaker and allow them to speak for up to three minutes. If there appears to be a large number of speakers, speaking time may be reduced to no less than two minutes. Members of the public are limited to one comment at this time. State law prohibits the council from discussing or acting on any non-agenda items and generally limits the ability of the company to respond to any public comments made regarding non-agenda items. I will now open it for public comment. Lisa, please let me know if we have any hands raised or star nines pushed.
Sure, sure. The first speaker is Cheryl Fama.
Great, welcome Cheryl. Could you please state your name and address and then we'll start?
Well, thank you, Mayor Rice and members of the council.
Whoops, whoops, you're unmuted. Lisa, can we unmute?
Oh, yes. Yeah, there we go. You're back.
Thank you. I'm Cheryl Fama, a longtime resident of the county, a career healthcare professional, the CEO of the Peninsula Healthcare District. But tonight I'm here and with a little pink in my cheeks because I'm, I don't know how to read correctly. So you read with filters. It's only a six o'clock start time and font eighty-two. And I came on at seven, but I want to speak on behalf of my role as a commissioner on the status of women this evening. On behalf of the commission, I want to thank you and the council for acknowledging the mental health condition, that, that mental health conditions are real and prevalent throughout our nation, our country, and certainly in our communities. And mental health is essential to overall health. Over the past year, pandemic year, never have residents been more challenged. As a commissioner on the status of women, it's also important to call attention to the disproportionate impact the pandemic has had on women of our communities. Women comprise thirty-nine percent of the workforce and yet they sustain sixty percent of the lost jobs. Women have been bearing the brunt of care responsibility for aging parents, for sick family members, for home, for homeschooling and childcare, which doesn't exist anymore. Pregnant mothers with small children were are experiencing and self-reported a three to five-fold increase in self-reported anxiety and depression symptoms. And tragically, women have been the target of a dramatic increase in domestic violence during the pandemic. These are unprecedented times and that have come, that have brought change, disruption to our routines, ambiguity and financial uncertainties, all contributing, contributing to stress, anxiety and depression. So if you or a loved one, a friend and associate have experienced any of these, please know that you are not alone. I've always since said, since I took my job fourteen years ago with the Peninsula Healthcare District, it is the number one health problem in our community is mental health and mental well-being. But we shouldn't be embarrassed. Mental health is no different than other health issues. Seeking out resources and professional help is not a sign of weakness. It's a sign of strength. So what I really want to do is call attention to the wonderful array of programs that the county's Behavioral Health and Recovery Services has set up. There is a free event on every day of the month of May that every, for all ages, for men, for women, for teens, for young adults, for, for middle, middle adult folks. And I really urge whomever might still be listening and those that are still on the meeting to just type in San Mateo County Mental Health Month and just look at the array of programs that are free to everyone. Fun things, serious topics that every day is full. So to wrap up, my apologies again for not knowing how to read. Thank you, though I have, I have been so impressed with the quality of your meeting, your discussion and the topics you've handled. But I do want to let you know as a lifetime nurse and professional, mental health is fundamental to health and engaging in activities that promote behavioral wellness is in fact the best prevention for mental illness. So thank you again, Hillsborough leadership. Thank you for the green building, but I won't spoil why. And on behalf of the Commission of the Status of Women for help, thank you for helping us all help raise mental behavioral wellness and mental health above this stigma that has been surrounding it for so long. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you for your, for your comments. We'll come back at the end if there's any clarifying questions, but thank you. Are there other raised hands, Lisa?
And no additional raised hands, Mayor.
Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment and see if any council members, any comments on anything that was heard during the public comment session. Councilmember Schwang.
Cheryl, appreciate your speaking up regarding the mental health. And it is, it is, as you said, mental health is a fundamental health. So thank you so much for your presentation.
Great. Councilmember Cole.
Yes, Cheryl, thank you for your comments. Very well said. I think you articulated it very well. Thank you, Cheryl.
Councilmember May.
Uh, no, other than thank you, Cheryl.
Vice Mayor Krollick.
Same thing. Thank you, Cheryl. Appreciate it.
And Cheryl, I would echo that plus ask a question. If you could provide our city manager with a listing of those county events you mentioned, we might give some thought to seeing how we can communicate those as well. So if you could provide it, we'll, we'll follow up with, with what we think is appropriate. So thank you very much. With that, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, the second to last, and that is city council items. This is an area where each council member can share with the council any committees or activities have been involved in. I would note that to the extent there are members on committees, typically we do a requirement to say what happened or, and/or nothing happened of particular relevance. And, and that's, you know, because it does expend some city funds to joining the GPAs. So with that, we'll move to Councilmember Schwang. Do you have any city council, any item?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Yes, last month I have attended several joint power authority meetings. And I want to highlight two of them. And one is the Office of, San Mateo County Office of Emergency Service. So the Office of Emergency Service, short for OES, has been under the, the super, or under the auspices of the sheriff, sheriff office and now has moved back to the county under, under the umbrella of the county manager. It is supported by the twenty member agencies plus the county. And this year, as we were going through the budget, the budget usually reflect the increase based on the personnel and their benefits. So this year with, in light of the COVID, I think that there was discussions at the April meetings to, to recommend using the reserve of two hundred thousand dollars to offset the increase. But going forward, I think that there is going to be discussions regarding setting a reserve policy for the OES and also looking into the membership agency fees, simply because we have just received the new numbers of this census. And so there's going to be some fluctuations regarding the numbers in each cities. And so there's a process to go through the review and maybe discuss about the membership fees. And then the other one that is, Councilmember Cole and I sit on the governance for the Central County Fire Department. And as at the, this afternoon's budget study sessions, our finance director mentioned that there is a five point one percent increase on each member agencies fund. And, and Central County Fire Department is, consists of Burlingame and Hillsborough, providing also contractual services to Millbrae. And so each city is expected to pay additional five, five point one percent increase. And so one of the discussions that our chief has talked about is to look into, sorry, I'm looking into my notes, is to look into the standard cover study so that we can bring back in terms of the construction that is happening in both Burlingame and Hill, Burlingame and Millbrae and the classification study on operation of the battalion chief. So those are the two studies that the chief is looking into in the coming years. And also the type six engine that is expecting, there's some delay due to COVID, but it looks like that we, Central County Fire Department will be receiving its type six fire engines in the summer.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Wow, that's even better.
Thank you, Marie. And I appreciate the update, particularly in the OES. There's probably no more critical county committee than we have right now than OES. So thank you. Councilmember Cole.
I don't have anything to add. Thank you. I'm Councilmember Krollick for updating.
Councilmember May.
No, other than today, we did our budget study session for Peninsula Clean Energy. I, I like to get all my budget study sessions in one day because you know, more, more numbers are better numbers. But it went very well. The, the one thing I keep learning from P C E is what a good economic indicator it can be for San Mateo County. One of the things we look about, look at is electric consumption from our customers. Yeah, over the past year, the, the COVID year, residential utilization has gone up a little bit as you would expect with everyone being home. But commercial use has dropped dramatically as we would also expect. But one of the interesting items that comes up is when you take three of our biggest customers, which are Genentech, Gilead and Facebook. Their usage has been fairly constantly high during the year. And, and I know for a fact that during the past year, Genentech has had at least about a third of its workforce on, onsite because they're doing necessary drug research and drug manufacturer, things that are critical during this time, as is Gilead. Facebook, anybody's idea what's going on there. But it's interesting to note that we'll be looking at what small businesses do in terms of energy consumption over the next few months as their businesses come back more online.
Great, thank you. And for those who don't know, I think, Larry, you're the chair of the P C E Budget and Finance Committee, if I'm not mistaken.
I am.
Yes, so, kudos. So I'm glutton for punishment, two budget meetings in one day. Vice Mayor Krollick.
Just report out from the Hillsborough Concorde Delegance. The July eighteen show is a go and they are really, unless any directive comes down from the county or the state that precludes them from having it, including negotiations with the site. But we're really hoping that an outdoor event in July will be popular. Ticket sales will begin soon. The committee is looking for sponsorships, which begin at a thousand dollars to sponsor a class. If anyone's interested in that, Jeff and I are going to do that. Just let me know and I can get you the information.
Thank you. I have about six items I wanted to report out. One is through the efforts of Ann and fellow city managers in Woodside and Portola Valley, we had a meeting with the State Insurance Commissioner. We also invited from Hillsborough, two of our residents and several, two of our leaders in the Firewise program, David Weinberg and Gwen Wong, who participated. But the purpose of it was number one, to make sure the commissioner understood the unique characteristics of towns like ours and, and the fire issues that we deal with. And secondly, that we could, and he could also advocate in our behalf with respect to insurance companies, particularly around making sure that insurance for our residential owners are both available and affordable. And he did share some interesting comments and some proposals he's working on to help make sure that happens. We also wanted to hear from him, his point of view and his perspective on the fire issues, particularly in, in our, in our towns like ours, but in our county and in the state. And he was very informative, very helpful. So I just wanted to let you know that did go on and I, I will show it to you. The thing that stirred me the most in the meeting was the mayors of both Woodside and Portola Valley had their property insurance canceled this past year because of the fire danger. And so do you think that that's not a, a risk that we need to control and manage? That it is one. They're in a different situation than we are because their, their topography is a little bit more, a little different than ours, although we showed the same types of concerns. But that did, that did surprise me. And the commissioner did talk about state programs and what they're doing to try to make sure that people are not left without insurance on their homes. The second thing I want to report on HBF, I did attend a meeting. I will not have to say anything because Kelly did a superb job of discussing what was going on there. SFO did not mute this week, but they do have their roundtable meeting on Wednesday this week. And I shared their legislative committee, which meets tomorrow. So if you have any, any, any questions or like to participate, please let me know and I can send you the Zoom link. I did attend on behalf of the town, the Hart Board Meeting. And it dealt, obviously, as you must expect with housing, they have four programs I thought were interesting, programs for first-time homeowners, loans for first-time homeowners, loans to developers who develop low-income housing, mortgage loan protection to mitigate or prevent preclosures and modular affordable housing programs. They're all fairly interesting. If you have additional input, would like more information, I, I would urge you to look at their website. The South Bay Waste Management Company, Christine and I both attended, is your representative and alternate. They did not have a board They did not have a board meeting, but they did have a board retreat and it was designed to lay out the different committees, the history and different challenges that they have coming up, all of which I think I think we've talked about. Anne did arrange a meeting for me to meet with Senator Becker. He is attending our meeting in, I believe it is June. And wanted to do two things. One, make sure he had an understanding of our town and the issues we're dealing with. And secondly, you know, get his input on what he wants to talk about. So so I did walk through both of those items with them, lay out an overview of what our town is like. And secondly, the issues I thought were pertinent to the town, particularly affordable housing and how it might impact the character and nature of the town. So when he attends to us and and Sophie, I did take your advice and did talk to him about pesticides and leaf blowers too. So thank you. And last but not least, I don't think I reported last time that the rethink waste trash to art program occurred. This is an annual program among elementary students in which they can create art out of trash. And we actually had a student in Hillsborough that took third place, Cassie Ling, for her artwork, art sculpture called Geometric Bee. And I think there'll be more information in that forthcoming. So those were the six items I wanted to report at. With that. Yeah, yes.
I believe you have a proclamation.
I have a proclamation. I'm sorry, it's not.
Did we? Sign a proclamation for an event that's coming up this weekend.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to remind me, Hannah. I've lost my train of thought here.
There is a United event this weekend to, and I believe we have a copy of the proclamation.
Do you have it on the on the screen?
I think we do.
Okay, let's put it up here.
Magic.
Jim, did you want to put that? Okay, thank you. Otherwise I would. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you know, I'm not able to read that. So you can help me read that.
This this actually kind of, we were we just adopted our new policy and this was one of those that came in with less than six weeks notice. So the mayor has taken it upon himself to go ahead and sign a proclamation proclaiming Communities United Day, which is coming up this Saturday on May fifteenth. And as the world continues to battle COVID pandemic, there are other crises that remain prevalent throughout our communities, the increase in assaults and discrimination toward the Asian American and Pacific Islander, African American, Latino American, Native American, LGBTQ plus and other marginalized communities. And whereas Asian Americans, African Americans, Latino Americans, Native Americans and all other groups marginalized by race, gender and sexuality have equal claim to protections afforded to all Americans through our constitution. And whereas language and actions motivated by MS are still targeted at marginalized communities despite legal protections and are often normalized in society and the Asian American and Pacific Islander community, especially the elderly population have recently been victims of crimes motivated by racial MS and witnessed throughout the Bay Area and across the country. And whereas crimes committed against marginalized communities of all kinds have too often been a defining part of America's history. And whereas government at every level should not condone rest racism, xenophobia, discrimination, inequality and intolerance by working to engage, working to ensure that all marginalized communities, no matter their background, language or beliefs, are treated with dignity and equality. And whereas America has always been a diverse country by virtue of our unique history. And this diversity is a strength of our national character that requires protection through mutual understanding and solidarity. And whereas the town appeals for our wishes to affirm its commitment to the safety and well-being of all Asian American, African American, Latino American, Native American, LGBTQ plus and other marginalized communities and visitors to ensure they know that they are not alone and that they can speak out to help stop the spread of bigotry, assaults and intolerance. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council lieutenant Hillsborough does hereby proclaim May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one as Communities United Day and encourages its residents to participate in the May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one Communities United Rally. Condemn racial violence in all forms through speaking out, defending all those targeted and seeking accountability against all perpetrators of racism, against any and all communities and calls upon all counties, cities and local governments across the United States to adopt similar commitments reaffirming their solidarity with marginalized communities.
Thank you, Anne. And and I apologize. I did sign that today and we talked about it and I forgot to put it on my list of items.
It has been a long day.
I wouldn't know that I did talk. This was spearheaded by councilmember Andrew Funga, Millbrae and Diane Pappin of Samatail. And the event on on Saturday in Samatail is open to everybody and and they especially would appreciate any council member attending. And I do plan to attend, but again, thank you for bringing it up. It's something I think we believe in. I know we believe in, particularly as we discussed earlier today. So. Any other items or any members of the council? If not, we'll come to the last item on the agenda, agenda, always my favorite part, and that's mayor's applause. And this is a part of the agenda which we try, which we recognize outstanding contributions or effort made by town staff or by citizens in town. And I'm very pleased tonight to recognize our city clerk, Lisa Natusch, who recently received her master municipal clerk certification. This is an advanced continued education program that has an extensive and rigorous educational component and a professional contribution component. Lisa is one of approximately one hundred and seventy master municipal clerks in California, thirteen hundred and eighty in the entire United States and fourteen hundred internationally. And what I like about this is I've long believed, and I think the the I've been echoed by other council members that we have one of the most accomplished and passionate staffs of any town on in Samatail County. They're constantly trying to exceed their expectations. And one way they do this is by constantly trying to improve themselves to add value to them and to the community. And Lisa stands as example of that. So Lisa, kudos. You are the recipient of the mayor's applause for this month. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for the recognition. Very kind of you. Thank you.
Okay, last but not least, I do want to again thank the public for attending. We had some really great attendance tonight, although stripped off as the hours gone gone on, as you might suspect. And with that, the meeting now stands adjourned.
Mayor, we're
I'm sorry, we will
Joining to close session?
Yeah, reconvening in closed session. So.
Thank you. So we go back to the closed session link.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Meeting that we had, we had continued for a closed session discussion. Purpose of the reconvening is to report out from the closed session, any items. With that, I'm going to turn to our legal counsel, Christopher, to give the report out.
Thank you, Mayor Royce. Just wanted to note A, B and D were considered earlier in the in the evening, but we did consider item C in closed session after the council meeting. And I did want to report out that the council voted for in favor with one conflict of interest absent on behalf of Vice Mayor Krollick to approve the claim in your agenda packet with Martha and Greg Ryan in the amount of thirty-nine oh six based on overall concerns with the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the only item left over on the agenda. Is there any other comments made by any member of the council? Just raise your hand. If not, I see no hands raised. We we stand adjourned. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.